Sorry, cancel my first. Oh, I'm always so.
What side do you think I would take?
The tape was on.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I sent out, I finally saw.
Glad I could see.
Yeah, you did.
No, I didn't. I didn't. I didn't. I didn't.
My dick entertained.
But I didn't want to. But he already has a really good spot. He didn't want to talk. I will remind you.
Roy got you for something.
Legal nights, he was bringing my garage. He was asleep, ran out of it. Underwear on.
The friend had.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, maybe.
Isn't that a period goal? I don't see it look like a period goal. Doesn't he look like a period goal? It goes glass.
It's for tomorrow. On the fourth.
Does it say four, four?
Yes, it does. Four, four, three.
All right.
Is your nothing negative?
Legally?
It's an E session.
Several years ago.
You don't have to be the fastest.
Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to die of the United States of America. And to die for his hands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in store.
Please remain standing for the invocation. Deacon John from the Anglican Church of Fountain Hills.
Please pray with me. Almighty God, our Heavenly Father, we who are blessed to live in the midst, in the midst of your magnificent creation, give grateful thanks. We ask that you send down upon those who hold office in this town of Fountain Hills, the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice. With steadfast purpose, they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Deacon John. Roll call, leave. Mayor Kavanaugh?
Here.
Councilmember Dickey?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Yates?
Present.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Here.
Councilmember Elke?
Here.
Councilmember LaChee?
Here.
Okay, I'll start off with a proclamation for Volunteer Month. Whereas April is designated National Volunteer Month, and giving freely to others is one of the noblest of human enterprises. And whereas this year marks the 40th Annual Celebration of Volunteer Month, created in 1973 to recognize the efforts of dedicated community volunteers. And whereas nationally, more than 175 million volunteers working in their communities contribute their time and talents daily to make a real difference in the lives of others. And whereas more than 700 Fountain Hills volunteers donated their time to the town of Fountain Hills by giving approximately 20,000 hours in 2013 as volunteer service to the community center, senior activity center, the municipal court, as well as volunteering in departments at Town Hall, including administration, development services, and community services. Now therefore, I, Linda M. Cavanaugh, Mayor of the town of Fountain Hills, do proclaim April as Volunteer Month in Fountain Hills, and hereby express deep gratitude to the many volunteers who support the town by generously giving their time and talents to benefit our community. Recognition that the town of Fountain Hills has received for the 19th consecutive year the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for fiscal years 2012-13 for its comprehensive annual financial report from the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada. Ken?
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, I'd like to ask Deputy Town Manager and Finance Director Julie Getty, as well as Craig Rudolfi, if you could please come up to the podium. As, as the mayor just indicated, the Governor, Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada awarded for the 19th time, the, to the town of Fountain Hills, the Award for Financial Reporting for the Comprehensive Annual, Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. This award is, is a, is a financial reporting achievement is presented by the GFOA to the individuals and, and the community designated as instrumental in their government unit achieving a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. A Certificate of Achievement is presented to those government units whose financial, or, financial reports are judged to adhere to the program standards and represents the highest award in government finance reporting. So I'd like to congratulate the two that actually did it for us, and yet again, for that, Julie and Craig. And Julie, if you could stay there, please.
Not done with you yet. Recognition of Deputy Town Manager, Finance Director Julie Getty for her service to the town of Fountain Hills.
Long service.
She started when she was 10.
Three seconds, right? It was green. Okay, Julie, it's your day. And I thought it would be a good time for all of us to, who worked with you, who you worked for, and the community that you worked so diligently for, for the last 24 and a half years for this organization and for this community. Julie's been one of the shining stars in our organization. You know, she started as an accountant and worked her way up as a, as accounting supervisor and finance director, and completed this, this last 24 and a half, I was trying to get a quarter century out of her, but she said. Completed as a Deputy Town Manager. You know, Julie, I've, I've been here a couple of years, but every time I go into her office, you always see her with a smile and willing to help, ready to, ready to meet the challenges. I've always admired her for that, and, you know, for the dedication to, not only to the staff and to the, and to the council and to the organization, but also to the community. So what I like to do is, is give a token of our appreciation is, you know, usually you give, when someone retires, you, you talk about the deadlines and you talk about all of the, the times, times that you have to give, and they used to give you a gold watch for that, for, I haven't figured that out yet. But we'll, we'll give you a plaque, so you can put it on the wall with the rest of your plaques that you have. Lastly, I want, and I know that Reno is here, your husband, and I understand from you that he's having way too much fun in retirement. And we hope that you can catch up to him as well on this. On behalf of the town of Fountain Hills, I'd like to award you this, give you this plaque for a token of our appreciation. Thank you.
You've got to have one or two stories.
Well, I have several stories, but I will take those with me. But I would like to take this opportunity to thank the council for their support and for this award, and particularly, I'd like to acknowledge Vice Mayor Hanson for taking a chance and hiring me 24 and a half years ago, and serving as my mentor for 11 years. But also thank the staff that have supported me and helped the town become what it is, and the citizens as well. So thank you very much.
Mark, you're up next.
Thank you. I, I stand in front of you this evening, kind of with mixed emotions. On one hand, happy for Brian and his new challenge, but also sorry both as a, as a boss, but more importantly, as a friend to see him go. But he will be close, and we've already promised to stay in contact. I just wanted to summarize kind of Brian's career a little bit, because I think it's pretty significant, both on, on a professional level and a personal level. Like Julie, he's got almost 19 years. I, I also made the comment to him yesterday that he had to be about 12 when he started. He started as a part timer in 1995 doing youth and adult sports. The next year, in 1996, he became the youth and adult sports and also was responsible for special events. He told me back in that day, he was playing at Golden Eagle Park on field number two, and it was old enough that there was just a dirt parking lot there that was not even paid at that time. In 2000, 2000, he became the interim, called the Deputy Director, when Robin Goodman left and before I came to Fountain Hills. He added the responsibilities of capital projects, including serving as the project manager for Fountain Park, and I think we're up to six phases now, and he's been working on that one as well. In 2002, became supervisor of recreation, and that year, he also was responsible for, as project manager for Desert Vista. So much of what you see at those two parks, Brian's responsible for. In 2010, he was recognized by our State Professional Association, the Arizona Parks and Recreation Association, with the President's Award, and that was a special recognition. It's not something that's typically given out, and so if, he, he was recognized for service to the organization above and beyond. He also, during his tenure, was very helpful to the APRA set up their new website. He was also instrumental in hiring the new executive director, who, interesting enough, was a former employee of the town of Fountain Hills. So he was able to make that work as well. And finally, in 2012, from the APRA, he reserved, he received the APRA Outstanding Professional Award. When it comes to special events, it's, it's probably his mantra. Brian is certainly known not only in Fountain Hills, but throughout the valley for special events. He's kind of become the go-to person if somebody has a question or wants a little information about a particular, maybe it's a band, or where do you go to get this particular product, whether it's restaurant facilities or special lighting, whatever, he's the one that they talk to. And things like Oktoberfest, the St. Patty's Day in Bala, Arizona, would not have come to our community if it were not for efforts on Brian's part. And finally, relatively recently, in 2012, he was certified as a Certified Park and Recreational Executive, which is the highest professional certification you can get for administration in the whole country associated in our, in our PA. And that was in 2012. He was one of three, only three in the whole state, and only 60 across the whole country. So that's extremely difficult to do. He goes on to become the Director of Parks and Recreation in Florence, and his main duties are these. He needs to increase special events. I don't see any problem there. He needs to develop parks, both new and renovating, existing parks, again, something he's done very well here. And finally, he'd be responsible for something that's very exciting, a new recreation aquatic center. And I'll close by saying this. When I was first recruited, Mr. Norden, who was the manager at the time, asked me if I liked working with the young staff and, and learning and teaching and that kind of thing, and I said I did. But I can honestly say with Brian that the teacher has become the student. So with that, I want to recognize Brian Hughes.
Just a real quick comment. I just want to thank the town of Fountain Hills, the past and present mayor and councils who've given me the opportunity to do what I love every day, and it was the quickest 18 and a half years of my entire life, and I will look back on it with fond memories forever. Thank you.
I had a special request from Consul Rick Melendez, who would like to, a few minutes to speak.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh, Vice Mayor Hanson, council members and staff. Thank you, Mayor, for allowing me an extra minute or two to pay tribute to an individual that I hold dear to my heart. 11 years ago, I had the honor and privilege to have been sworn into the office of council member by Judge Shoup in the old building. That remembers that. At that time, there were three individuals who would really help me to learn about local government, as my previous assignment with the oil company held the responsibility of state government through the Western United States of America. Those individuals were very important. Former town manager and friend, rest in peace, Paul Norden. Cassie Hanson, Councilmember Cassie Hanson. And finally, my good friend, Finance Director Julie Getty. The latter, Julie Getty, is a person I want to offer acknowledgement and respect of several council members and mayors who couldn't be here tonight. Former Mayor Morgan said, quote, "Julie was the glue that held a town together during difficult times." You won't believe this, but former Mayor John Beiler called me yesterday, and he said, quote, "Julie, thanks for helping us pay the bills." And throughout my term in office, I frequently met with Julie, together my good friend, former council member John Wyman, to analyze and project what was the best thing financially for our community. There were four critical issues which involved her advice and counsel to, to our council, which all involved fiscal responsibilities. The first one was the mountains, and I don't need to go into a big talk about the mountains, because we enjoy the beauty that we have and the freedom of seeing the most beautiful scenic view in, in I believe, the country. The second one was a little bit more serious. It was the law enforcement issue, Resolution 2003-16, which I proudly called the Melendez Resolution, which passed on a four to three vote on April the 3rd, 2003. It was seconded by Councilman John Kavanaugh. It's important to note that this issue not only dealt with the actual law enforcement factor, but equally important, the budget impact to our town. The town marshal's department was costing us $1.1 million a year. The sheriff was costing us $1.4, and clearly, we couldn't afford it. And it's important to note, Sheriff Arpaio, wherever you are, and Captain then, Jerry Sheridan, that it was a two-factor issue. It was not only law enforcement, but it clearly dealt with the budget. In talking about the sheriff, mayor, and council, I'd like to acknowledge my good friend, Captain Joe Rodriguez, and his deputies, who have performed great, great service and safety to our community. Julie helped us to navigate through that fiscal budget problem, and the council made the decision after a seven-hour council meeting on one issue. And I think you remember that, Councilmember Hanson? We used to have meetings that started with these sessions at 4:30 in the afternoon. One ended at 2 o'clock in the morning, and I happened to have the marshal Matt Martinet take me to home. My wife Pam opened the door and said, "Where have you been?" There were no cell phones, no telephones, nothing. The third one was the fire district. The week after I became a council member, we learned that the fire district was disbanded on a 61 vote, and we were without fire protection. Here again, we had emergency executive sessions, meeting with fire district officials. We settled 16 lawsuits against, against the town with the help of Andrew McGuire, and of course, the fiscal advice of Julie Getty. Finally, the Target Shopping Center, which was brought to Fountain Hills during my term, which is an invaluable tax revenue to our community, Julie guided us through the financial process. Thank you, Julie, for making it possible for us to make a logical fiscal decision. Those were the most important budget issues of my tenure. There were others as well, which Julie's impact was invaluable. So in summary, Mayor and council, Julie Getty, on behalf of the many council members and mayors who couldn't be here, thank you for your contributions, 24 years of service, loyalty to the council members, town manager and staff, and myself, your friend who stands in front of the present council tonight to salute you. Thank you. I want to give her a hug.
All right, now we'll go on to my review of events related to economic development. Well, the Economic Development Meeting of MAG was canceled this month, so I've got nothing to report on that tonight, and the GPEC meetings were also postponed. However, I do have something interesting. I have an update on the Elman property. Many people have been asking me what's been going on with the old state trust land, that's now the, we call the Elman property. And I asked my husband, State Representative Cavanaugh, if he could try and get in touch with the state land commissioner, since I was having a little trouble getting through. John was able to find out where we are with that land north of town. Elman so far has invested 25 million in the property. He was granted a 10-year extension by the state. That 10 years is up on March 15th, 2016. By that date, Elman will have to pay $181,969,982. If he fails to pay, the, the state will take back the land, and it will be available for another buyer. By law, there can be no more extensions. So I thought that was a good update, since I get many questions about what's going on with the state trust land. Do we have any general speaker cards? No, Mayor. No, okay. We will go on then to the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
As a point of information, I'd like to abstain from the consent agenda due to my conflict of interest in owning the business referenced in item number two.
Okay, Moxy's Modern Fair. All right. We have four items on the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to accept as listed?
Show them a second.
And roll call vote, please. Councilmember Dickey?
Aye.
Councilmember Elke?
Aye.
Councilmember LaChee?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
And Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Mayor six, zero. All right, thank you. Now we'll go on to our regular agenda items. I open the public hearing. Public hearing of ordinance 14-02 amending the town Fountain Hills zoning ordinance, Chapter 24, medical marijuana uses related to medical marijuana dispensary days and hours of operation.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Mark Steinmetz is the owner of Nature's Arizona Medicines, the medical marijuana dispensary located at 16913 East Enterprise Drive. The marijuana dispensary has been open and in operation for approximately seven months now. Hours of operation are currently only permitted by the ordinance to be between 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. The applicant is requesting that Section 24.03.0B of the zoning ordinance be amended to allow the marijuana dispensary to have operating hours between 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. daily. The dispensary is currently in conformance with the zoning ordinance. It's also in compliance with the additional stipulations of their site plan approval, which included lighting, security cameras, guards, and signage. Also, no incidents at this site have been reported by MCSO. The applicant has provided a lengthy narrative in which he outlines his reasons for the request, and that narrative is in your packets. Primary reasons cited by the applicant appear to be that the limited hours inhibit the dispensary's ability to compete with dispensaries in other cities and towns that allow longer hours, that the limited hours are inconvenient to customers to work during the day. In their opinion, the limited hours are discriminatory, and that they only relate to his business, and that dispensaries help reduce illegal drug use. Staff's position at the rules established in other communities are really not relevant to Fountain Hills, as they don't reflect the attitudes and standards that Fountain Hills adopts or follows, and also that this is not a referendum on drug use in America. Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on this application at their February 27th meeting. They forwarded a recommendation to the council to approve a zoning ordinance amendment, but not as requested. Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation is to allow the hours of operation to be 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday only, with no Sundays. To be clear, the ordinance as written is well within the guidelines established under state law, and there's no requirement that the ordinance be changed. What this really is, is a policy decision that the council's being asked to, to make. Whether or not amending the ordinance and extending the operating hours of the marijuana Whether or not amending the ordinance and extending the operating hours of the marijuana dispensaries is in the best interest of Fountain Hills. If you decide yes, then staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation be adopted rather than the applicant's original request. If you decide no, then staff recommends denial of the request. Thank you. I believe the applicant is here and wishes to make a presentation as well.
Does anyone have questions for Bob? Counsel, questions for Bob at this time? Okay, thank you, Bob. Okay, the applicant would like to make statement.
If I may, Counsel, Mayor, I'd like to...
Please approach the podium, state your name, where you live.
My name is Mark Steinmetz. I'm a resident of Scottsdale, not far east, or west from here. I would like to introduce my legal representative, Mel McDonald, and then if I may, make some comments later in the presentation. For those of you that don't know, Mel McDonald, he is a former Maricopa County prosecuting attorney. He is a former Superior Court Judge and a U.S., former U.S. Attorney appointed under the Reagan administration. I'd like to, at this point, introduce Mel.
And just want to remind you, you'll be speaking in reference to the hours.
Yes, that is correct. My name is Mel McDonald. I have been introduced. I think what I bring to you is this perspective that I would like you to consider. I've worn the hat, as you heard, of a judge, of a U.S. Attorney who set national policy on drugs, and as a father of a brain-injured son who relies upon medical marijuana. As I had the opportunity of attending the planning and zoning meeting, my dear wife has come tonight to also express her support, so I won't go into the sum of the tragedy of her situation, other than to say this. What we are talking about, in my respectful opinion to you members of this council, is respect for patients. I have seen the situation of my wife having to drive when the program came out halfway across Phoenix to get her medication. Right now, she's a dispensary, on a board of directors, a dispensary where one of, some of the Fountain Hills people go, where they, because they can't get their medication because of the hours. I'm here to plead with you that it is not right, and it is not fair. Throughout the entire state of Arizona, the Fountain Hills dispensary has the most inconvenient hours in a dispensary. There are many people who cannot buy their medication between 9:00 to 5:00, Mondays to Fridays. They just can't do it. To not have access on Saturday is a real hardship. When I was present several weeks ago, when it went before the planning and zoning, I will tell you that I heard many of the arguments that were made there. Many of the arguments, when I was United States Attorney, I had some of those same fears. I had five children by a first marriage and three children by a second marriage. None of us want our children to be exposed to drugs. And I probably wouldn't be standing at the dais today had I not gone through the experience of seeing how marijuana actually has medicinal value.
Excuse me, you're supposed to be speaking on the hours, not the benefits of medical marijuana.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to do, Madam Mayor. I think it all, it all plays in, if you will, to this point. What I'm saying is that patients, and many times, these patients can't drive cars. They have to have other people take them. My wife has taken my son across town, as he's been having seizures in the car, trying to drive while he's having this situation taking place. In answer to many of the concerns, I will tell you that the security apparatus for dispensaries are better than banks, are better than pharmacies like Waldron's or CVC. So many of those that are opposed to it talked about it from a safety standpoint. There is not a single study in the United States that suggests that medical marijuana somehow increases usage. The security of the Fountain Hills dispensary is outstanding. One of the criticisms was lighting. They have excellent night. I would urge you, ladies and gentlemen, to make these modest amendments so that patients have access to the medicine that they have. I think the science, more and more, is coming to recognize that there is medicinal values. I oppose legalization, but I am an advocate for medical use. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. The applicant like to make a presentation at this time?
When I first applied for the medical marijuana dispensary in the Town of Fountain Hills, I was aware of the hours of 9:00 to 5:00, and I did inquire as to, you know, how stringent those hours were. What I was told is, why don't you operate for, you know, six months to a year? And when, you know, when you can show a decent track record, you know, you certainly have the right to come forward and ask for additional hours. You know, if the request is reasonable, you know, we have reasonable people on the Town Council on zoning, and I'm sure they'll hear you out. I found that to be true among the zoning people, and I believe that's going to be true today, I certainly hope so. I, we have operated now eight months as of tomorrow, and without any incident. I think we, when we first moved into the area, we probably did have some detractors who thought, hmm, I wonder what this is going to be like, you know? Are there going to be kids skateboarding in the parking lot? Is this going to be a hang? You know, none of that has happened. All the fears that were brought about have not taken place. The security is excellent, as Mel pointed out, probably better than a bank, in that you're buzzed through to a, you know, a bulletproof glass enclosure where you show two forms of ID, including your state card. It's run through the Arizona Department of Health database, for those of you that haven't, you know, stepped foot into the dispensary. You know, we double-check it against the ID. It's also verified in the database that it's a valid card. We know exactly how much cannabis they've bought. They're limited to two and a half ounces in a 14-day period. It's a rolling 14 days. You know, all of that is checked on the spot before they're even buzzed into the waiting room, which is a separate room from the patient services area. The cannabis is secured yet in a third room that's all bulletproof, walls, glass. You know, there's safes within that safe room. It's redundant security. On top of that, you've got 16 security cameras, you know, monitored 24/7 by an armed guard during, during business hours, as per, you know, the code of this Town of Fountain Hills, which is not required in other townships, but we gladly participated in, you know, in that request, and never asked for anything else. We've operated as a pure medical dispensary. If you would spend any time, and some of you have, and I appreciate that, have actually come in and watched and observed, you can see that this is a medical program. This is a doctor's office type of environment. You have folks that are sick and are obviously, some of them obviously ill, some of them not obvious, but, but all of them that I have come into contact with have a real medical need. And I would say the average age is about 60, you know, ranging, you know, 40s to 80s, but, you know, very few young people, you know, step foot in here. It is a primarily medical facility, and the medical benefits of marijuana have been discussed openly, quite frequently in the last year or two. Sanjay Gupta has come 180 on the issue. A number of people who were steadfast against it, including my counsel, have understood that there are medical benefits, and there's new doors to research being opened every day, including our own medical director, which just received approval to do an FDA-approved study that she had had approved by the FDA some time ago, but had a problem accessing medicine through NIDA, which is the National Institute of Drug Abuse, whose mission is to prove harm, not, not good. She finally had a, they've come around and decided they're going to actually furnish a federal cannabis to an FDA study to prove benefit for PTSD patients who desperately need it. And Sue has led the charge on that nationwide. So that was reported in the New York Times, the LA Times, Chicago Tribune. It's made national news that our medical director has had a breakthrough. She's just waiting DEA approval and will start her study. She's also, in addition to being an actual MD, a psychiatrist, and an associate professor at the University of Arizona, where the research will be conducted. So, you know, I'm proud of that association. You know, we're on it, we're acting as, as good citizens in good faith within the rules of Proposition 203. All we're asking for is fair access for the patients. They should not have to drive to another community to access their medicines because they happen to work a traditional job, or perhaps their spouse or their caregiver, because they can't drive, has to work a traditional job. We had a woman who I didn't know earlier, a zoning hearing, get up in tears and express frustration that she lives in a community where her husband can't, because she can't drive, her husband has to access medicine, and he can't do it because he's got an 8:00 to 5:00 job, and she, they have to drive to another community. That costs the community jobs, and it costs this tax base, and it creates an inconvenience for, you know, medical patients who don't need to be inconvenienced any further. And we have a lot of people that come in, they have Parkinson's, they have cancer, you know, they have chronic pain issues. And to cause people to have to drive to another community to do business is just wrong. It's probably costing town retail dollars in other ways as well, when you force patients to do their shopping in another community. Yeah, all I'm asking for is really similar zoning to what we have in Mesa. As Mel pointed out, there's four dispensaries in that community, and they have hours of 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Monday through Sunday. It's not my intent to be open on Sunday right away, and I expressed that to the zoning board. It's not even my intent to be open past 7:00. If you look at the board over here on the right, I just put together a little display of dispensaries that operate in primarily in the East Valley. I put Arizona Organics there at the bottom, although they're in Glendale. They were the first dispensary to open. Most all of them, as you can see, are open Monday through Sunday, and most of them until 7:00 p.m. There's a couple that are, that were open later. But virtually all of them open Saturday and Sunday. I voluntarily decided not to have my Phoenix store, which is right off the I-17 on McDowell, not open on Sunday. I think, you know, Sunday's the family day of the rest, and I am, you know, I made a personal decision there. But I did ask for the Mesa hours in case at some point in time in the future, patient demand should dictate that. But for now, my intent was to, to really be open until 7:00, and to be open Saturdays probably 9:00 to 5:00. But that's, you know, that's, that's my true intent, and that's, that's a recap of my request. You know, the objections that have been brought about in the zoning hearing by the coalition, who I think is a well-meaning group of people who are out to protect kids from marijuana, I think kids should not be smoking marijuana. I don't think people should be smoking marijuana unless they have a medical condition, but probably not until they're, you know, at least well into their 20s. There's enough research that says although there's benefits for older adults, there is a detriment to youth smoking marijuana and IQ development if they smoke it early and often at an early age, unless there's, unless there's a real medical reason that might be life-threatening, as in the case of Mel's son. You know, then it's lesser of the harms. But I, I certainly empathize with that group, and the facts show that, I handed out something just prior to the meeting, that when regulated medical marijuana programs are implemented, teen use falls. And if you think about it from a macro socio-economic point of view, it makes perfect sense. But you have to think outside the box for a moment and just think about, this is an industry that's come from a street business, you know, to dealers and to a legitimate, you know, medical enterprise. It's a, it's quite a, it's quite a leap. Whenever you, you take business away from the black market, you are hurting the very people who are selling drugs to kids. You know, we're obviously not. And the program has demonstrated that. The research that was done in 2012, even though the dispensaries weren't open until primarily 2013, the first one opened in early December of '12, but most of us didn't open until about the spring or summer of 13. But even under the caregiver rules that were in effect at that time, prior to dispensaries being open, it showed in Arizona, we were down over 6% in teen use. Just, and that's in the hands of caregivers, which are people that are, are growing in their, in their homes, or grow houses, or wherever, for, for patients. But they showed a great deal of responsibility and restraint, and those aren't business people that were going to lose licenses if they, if they sold illegally, as dispensary owners certainly would. So, you know, I think it is in, in good hands. There have been no incidents among other dispensaries for selling to underage. We all follow the rules. We all have a lot to lose. The other issues that were brought up were security and lighting. I think we've touched on security. We're over and above what the Department of Health would, would request. And, and the lighting was dictated by 24.03. We have exceeded all the lighting requirements. We've added lighting in the parking lot. We leave our lights on with no shades over the windows 24/7. People can drive by anytime and see what's going on. The light shines through into the parking lot from the interior, because they're very bright, as required. So I think, you know, really, those concerns are pretty much unfounded. Also, you know, it's not dark at 7:00, you know, at this time of year. You know, that might be an issue maybe two months, three months during the year. But I think we've demonstrated, you know, plenty of lighting and plenty of security and no incidents. So, do you have any questions of me?
All right, thank you. Counsel, questions for Mr. Steinmetz? Councilman Yates?
Thank you, sir, for coming up. My, my main question, at least at this point, are you a nonprofit or are you a for-profit? And if you're going to be a nonprofit, how that's going to change? You, you mentioned the tax base and comparing yourself to, to other businesses. I'm just interested in...
Yeah. Proposition 203 dictated that, that we did not have to be nonprofits, but we had to operate as, as a nonprofit, which means we can't take profit out of the business. That's the bottom line, is that when we operate, if we, if we, you know, have excess cash flow, profit, that, that has to be donated, you know, to, you know, 501(c)(3) charities. We're not a 501(c)(3) charity. We pay sales tax, state, county, federal. We pay federal income tax. We pay state income tax. You know, we, we have to operate as a nonprofit, but technically, many of the dispensaries are not. We happen to be. We actually formed a corporation, it's a CRNS Corp., I forget, under, under Arizona state law, under, you know, as a nonprofit, but not a 501(c)(3). I, I remember being confused when I came down to the Town of Fountain Hills to sign up for my business license. It was, you know, I said, well, you know, I'm supposed to run like a non-for-profit. I really can't take profit out of the business, but is this, but I'm not a 501(c)(3). Which business license do I get? A nonprofit one or a, or a for-profit one? And they said, well, if you're not a 501(c)(3), you should just get a regular business license. So that's what I did.
Madam Mayor, as a follow-up then, to be specific, you are paying sales tax, or are you not paying sales?
We do, in fact, pay state, county, and federal sales tax.
And then once, I'm sorry, Mayor. And then, and then once your license does go through to that, that next designation, or, don't you have a nonprofit pending?
No.
Or the license, the status that you are right now, that's going to remain?
That's going to remain.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions on this side? No, not right now? Any more questions? Councilman Elkie?
Thank you. Mr. Steinmetz, appreciate the information you provided. Your application asks for 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Monday through Sunday, yet here tonight you stand, you said, well, probably won't be open on Sunday, and in fact, if we're open on Saturday, it'll be 9:00 to 5:00, and you probably won't be open until 7:00 at night if it's granted what your request is.
Right.
Why should we give serious consideration to what your request is if you're saying something different here tonight, as far, as far as what you'll probably do anyway?
Because I'm a responsible businessperson who's very, very conservative in my economics, and actually, in most other elements of my life as well. And I, I take things one step at a time. I think, I think, I think I want to show, there has to be a need to be open Sunday. I think I express my values about that. But I wanted the, I thought we should be consistent with Mesa zoning, if, if in fact, circumstances should dictate that patients need access on Sundays, as drugstores and pharmacies are open on Sundays, or, or until 9:00 and 10:00 p.m. Most pharmacies and drugstores are open until 9:00 or 10:00. If, if in the future, I felt business conditions and patient demand dictated that, I would like to be able to, to make those adjustments without having to spend thousands of dollars and come back through this process once again. I mean, that was, you know, I just felt like the Town of Mesa did a very good job in a conservative community to zone properly, and I just felt those conservative rules should probably apply here. It's, that was my thinking.
Of course. You recognize the distinct difference between Mesa and the community that we have here locally, correct?
Well, yeah, they're two different towns, sure.
Right. And different sets of values, different sets of needs, and obviously, a different council as well.
Sure.
Do you believe that with the P&amp;Z recommendation, as it stands, the 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday, based on the current needs of your patients, that that would fit your current needs of your patients?
I think it would help enormously. I think it's a good first step, and, and I would certainly embrace it. It would be, it would give them access. They need some access outside of work hours. I mean, a lot of folks who live in Fountain Hills would like to find employment in Fountain Hills, but have had a hard time finding businesses that are expanding their operations and hiring, and that's obviously a, a problem for the community. So they are, they're forced to drive to other communities to work. And for those folks that have to commute to a 9:00 to 5:00 job, they, they have no access to the, to their medicine, or for their, you know, to the, to the caregiver, caregiving person that they're, they're caring for. So it's, it's a difficulty that, that should be avoided, and at least giving till 7:00 allows somebody who might work until 5:30 and has to commute 45 minutes back, at least maybe a half an hour before we close to, you know, to access medicine.
Mayor, if I may, one more. And can you, can you explain to me how you've compiled your statistics as to those residents that are Fountain Hills residents that are traveling to Mesa, traveling to Phoenix, traveling to other dispensaries to get their prescriptions? to other dispensaries to get their prescription?
Well, that, that's not a statistic. I mean, that's just an anecdotal, you know, story that I've heard repeatedly from patients. I mean, we just have patients coming in constantly. And I've, I've thought about having a petition or something that they could sign, but, but, you know, we have to observe HIPAA rules and HIPAA compliance and, and that's confidential information who our patients are. And I would not ask them to put their name and addresses on a piece of paper and circulate it to anyone, but it's a long list if I did. I mean, there are a lot of patients who say, "Why are these hours so ridiculous?" And I'll say, you know, that the community, you know, I have to applaud them for embracing, you know, medical marijuana to begin with, but it, you know, they, they're afraid of it, you know, and they, they needed, they wanted to go slow. And I tell them the story that I was told to come back and, you know, after we operated for a period of time and demonstrated responsibility and demonstrated good citizenship and professionalism that, that we, you know, might be granted, you know, additional hours. And they're all hopeful that we, that we will be.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, once again, thanks for being here and your presentation, much appreciated. Could you share with me currently, to the best of your knowledge, the number of patients you're servicing in your dispensary in Fountain Hills?
Well, I can, I can tell you that there are about 258 patients within the town of Fountain Hills. And, you know, we, I haven't netted out exactly how many unique patient visits we had. It's varied a lot. When we first opened in July, July 22nd, this past summer, Scottsdale was not open. Most of the Mesa dispensaries were not open. We were actually early, middle of the pack to open. And, and I think we were getting patients, you know, from, from Scottsdale and so forth. I think a lot of that's changed due to the, the hours issues. I mean, as these other dispensaries open, they opened with, with better hours. And, and I think it's been inconvenient, you know, for people to drive from, you know, very far, to have to drive here during business hours when they have dispensaries that are open, you know, that have more convenient hours for them. So it's a roundabout way of answering your question. I, I don't really know, I mean, how many exact patients we have today that actually live in Fountain Hills, but I know there are 200, last I looked, 278 cardholders in your community.
Let me ask you a question in a different way. Do you know how many folks that you service in your dispensary?
I think we've, yeah, again, I don't know the number of unique individuals because our point-of-sale system kind of keeps track of, it's a repeat of customers. So, yeah, I, you know, between the two stores, it's been, you know, over a thousand, I believe, between Phoenix and Fountain Hills. But, you know, it probably separates, you know, 65, 35 in terms of Phoenix and Fountain Hills.
Mayor, if I may, I have an additional question. I, I understand the limitations of HIPAA, kind of worked in that environment in the past. Without getting into too much detail, can you share with me the range of medical needs that are serviced through your dispensary?
Sure. I think some of this was in the packet of information that was circulated earlier to all of you with regard to, you know, qualifying conditions. I mean, the majority are chronic pain. I can tell you it's over 70%. That is the statewide statistic and those stats are readily available through the Arizona Department of Health Services website. You can just look it up and they did a very good job actually recapping the year-end 2013 in terms of the number of patient cardholders, the communities they live in and the qualifying conditions in which they qualified for to get their card. Chronic pain was like 72, 73%. I think we see that reflected in the local community that accesses medicine through us as well. It, I think chronic pain is like a $5 billion industry nationwide. I mean, it's, you know, the, the only tool that doctors seem to have at their disposal are pharmaceutical opiates, you know, which is a derivative of, you know, heroin. It's, it's oxycodone, which is a lot of, is the prescription heroin of today, you know, Percocet, Vicodin, all of those, you know, there's a whole list of these opiates. They're, they're very dangerous. 16,000 people a year die of opiate overdoses, 1,000 a year right in the state of Arizona. So it's a very, you know, dangerous thing. Pain management people are always looking for alternatives and medical marijuana has surfaced as a very effective pain reliever, either in ointment form or, or to be vaporized or to be used in edible form. And, and a lot of our patients gain relief there. But we also have cancer patients, we have Parkinson's patients, fibromyalgia, you know, people that are seeking, you know, relief from seizures and spasms. You know, the, the list is, is pretty long of qualifying conditions and, and we, we run the gamut.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Anyone else have? All right, I have a few questions. In relation to the amount of patients that you have, the latest statistics from the state show that there are only 179 cardholders in Fountain Hills.
Oh, it's 179? I said 278 and I was taking off, I was speaking exponentially, but is that right? Okay, I was 100 off, all right.
So if you're talking about just the convenience of the residents here, it would be 179 and you said that there are some who can't make it, so it's during those hours, so that would be a certain percentage of 179.
Was that from the 2013 year-end study? Okay.
The 2013 study right here.
Okay.
Yes. In relation to the security, do you have metal detectors?
No, we don't. We, we have a glass box, like I said, that's, you know, bulletproof, that's resistant. Our, our feeling, I think the feeling most folks in the security business is that if somebody comes in and they've got a, two forms of state ID, you know, picture, photo IDs and you can verify them through databases, you know where they live, you, you know who they are, the last thing they're going to do is cause you harm once they're inside. You know, it's, it's probably the least likely scenario for being, you know, robbed.
But theoretically, someone who is armed could have a card and could get in past the bulletproof glass.
Actually theoretically, no, because people who have cards are not allowed firearms, not allowed to buy them or possess them.
Well, okay. That doesn't mean they don't have them, but by law, yes, okay. You said that most of your patients are in their 60s.
I would say that's the average age.
Okay. I, and I know you can't give particular information, but the nationwide average for marijuana cardholders in their 60s is only 12%, so...
In this state, it runs older. The biggest age group is actually over 40. The, the majority of patients are over 40 years of age, according to the year-end report from 2013. It was like 50.
Well, I have the 2013 report.
Mm-hmm.
And from 18 to 40 is 62%.
That's not true. Actually, I, I, I just looked at the data before this meeting.
I have the study right here. 18 to 30 is 42%. 31 to 40 is 62%. 41 to 50 is 79%. And over 50 is only 21%, so...
That's, I'm sorry, I have to, I don't, I'd have to look at the data because I think something's being misinterpreted. Actually, 50, I think it's over, it's over 50% or over 40.
All right, well, you can't really misinterpret statistics.
May I look at this?
But there are, and, and the amount, and males is 72%. So I just, I wanted to mention that. So you, okay, so you also made some statements that you feel that it's discriminatory. You're in a separate zoning category, especially for the marijuana dispensaries. If you were like a pharmacy, you would be treated like a pharmacy. But you're so different from that. I mean, I, the last time I went into Walgreens, I didn't have to be buzzed in by an armed security guard or go behind bulletproof glass, so...
Probably shouldn't be, though.
So, well, it's, it's, it's considered safe, which is why you don't have to. Okay, so I don't, I don't consider you like a pharmacy. And if you were, then the town would recognize you in that category, but you're not. You're in a separate category that is just meant for medical marijuana dispensaries. And if we were a very large town and we had two or three, then you would all be treated exactly the same. So I don't think we're discriminating against you. We're just looking at the category and following the rules according to the category.
May I respond to that?
Sure.
I, I don't necessarily, you're discriminating against me. I think there's discrimination against the patients who happen to choose medical marijuana for their, as their medicine of choice. And, you know, it's, it's, it's an opinion of, of the folks who created 24.03 that, that there should be a difference between, you know, prescription drug pharmacies and in a medical marijuana dispensary. And, you know, that, that distinction was drawn by the, the folks who made that choice, not by, not by the citizens of the community. And I just, I'm just asking that the patients be looked at in a nondiscriminatory way, that the people who choose to use a, a natural herbal medicine shouldn't be, you know, shouldn't have to deal with hours that are that restrictive relative to people who choose to, you know, normal, traditional prescription drugs. That's all.
But we also have to watch out for the safety of our town. And it, where I'm very happy that you've never had an incident, but maybe you haven't had an incident because you've only been open during the daytime. And that's a time when it's relatively safe in town. We all know that it's late hours and, and in your location, on weekends, there's very few businesses that are even open. You're pretty isolated where you are. So that may be the reason why we've been lucky and not had any incidents. Plus, it's also that you've only been open for eight months. A lot of people don't know you're there. You are vulnerable, like the many other dispensaries that we've seen in Colorado and California and even one in Tempe, that there already have been a lot of robberies there, mostly because of the fact that you have a lot of cash on hand, you have a product that is very valuable. And we also have to, we also have to take into consideration that you have patients who are not only arriving with cash, but also leaving with a product that is, also makes them a victim, possible victim of robbery. So it's also within our ordinance that not only that we have to look at health of patients, but also the safety.
None of the dispensaries, Mayor, have, have had any, any burglary. It was, I think the incident you're talking about in Tempe was a delivery person, not of a dispensary, but a caregiver.
No, there was a, there was a dispensary in, in Tucson.
I don't think it was a legal licensed dispensary.
It had an armed robbery.
It wasn't not a legal licensed dispensary.
I just Googled this for five minutes and I got an entire book full of crime statistics, but...
Yeah. Dispensaries typically nationwide have lower crime rates than your typical retail business.
Right. Well, we're, we're talking about the hours now and we're talking about the safety and I know there are also still some caregivers in Fountain Hills and they also could also provide product. And I know that you can't deliver, but caregivers can. So that's also another way that patients can, can get their marijuana. I'm going to...
Do you favor that?
Thank you for, thank you, and I'm going to open it to, is there any, any more questions from council before I open it up to the public?
Mayor, I have one thing to say about the idea that you are different from a pharmacy. That's because this issue has been so edgy for so many years that when it made its way through, being something that people voted on and approved as a legal medical marijuana, a legal substance to be used in that way, the, they, they went, you know, way far to make sure it was safe. And that's why when you say, it almost sounds like trying to use it against him, that he, that it's so secure. It's secure because the law is, is making it be secure. And, and I guess I don't think we need, I think you tried to narrow Mr. McDonald down but to talking about just the hours, which I don't think is necessarily what we need to do, is to stop people from speaking about this entire issue, because if it wasn't this issue, we wouldn't be even talking about this very much. It would just be a business that wants to be open on a Saturday. So to try to remove that from this conversation and given what, Mayor, you were just saying too, also shows how interconnected these things are. So I feel that anybody that speaks can speak to any part of this issue. I, my preference would be to just talk about the hours though and to look at the idea of the pharmaceuticals and get back to that. When you see a new drug get introduced, if it's a, a new antidepressant or a new pain reliever, I don't think people scrutinize it that way and say, "Well, this is a dangerous drug." It just, it just becomes at Walgreens or, or any pharmacy legitimately. But this is just getting such scrutiny and it's a little bit hard to understand because it, it's, it's a substance, it's a legal substance, it's a natural substance with side effects and things that are not as extreme as some other medicines are. Yet we, when, when, when an adult gets a prescription for a medicine and you see that whole list of really scary side effects, that's where that gets weighed, whether you go with the side effects, if it's worth it, if it helps, whatever your ailment is. So I feel like if, we shouldn't punish them for being so, so secure and not looking like a Walgreens, because that's the way the law was written and that's what they have to comply with and they do so far.
Thank you.
I'd just like to clarify why I, I said to Mr. McDonald to speak on the issue. Had Mr. McDonald taken out a speaker card, he could have said for three minutes any topic he wanted, but he was brought forth as someone who was Mr. Steinmetz's attorney who was going to speak about the hours. Other than that, he, he could have said anything he wanted, had he done a speaker card.
And Mayor, I appreciate that, I, but in my interpretation, he was trying to tell us why it was important to get access to the medication.
All right.
I can fill out a speaker card because there were other issues on security.
All right, please. Mr. Steinmetz, anything else? Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Steinmetz?
One question, Mayor.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. So the, the computer system that keeps track of the slide cards, the, the actual card that they walk in and swipe?
Yes.
Is probably fairly sophisticated. Does it have the capability or would the state release the information as to citizen A from Phoenix buying marijuana in Mesa? I mean, they have to have a residency someplace.
You know, there has been a recent dialogue between myself and our State Director of Health, Mr. Will Humble, about, you know, using the database in other ways. Will would like to actually do a study that would show how marijuana is impacting opiate use, as opiates again are killing 1,000 Arizonans every year. He, you know, we've all seen evidence to believe that as people are picking up medical marijuana, you know, patient cards and getting prescriptions for medical marijuana, that they're, they're dropping their opiate use or eliminating their opiate use, which has been a tremendous healthful, you know, benefit for most of our patients. We have a lot of patients come to us and say, "I don't take Vicodin anymore. I don't take the oxycodone anymore and it was a problem for me," you know, and, and they would describe the side effects. So to use that data in, in ways like that to be able to show a corollary, you know, that we can see a benefit here would be helpful for the, the health community. And we're, we actually discussed it as a dispensary member group at our last dispensary association meeting to, you know, and, and that may be a possibility, but at this moment in time, you know, we're all very, you know, tethered to the HIPAA requirements and that data is kept very, very safe.
I, I would think that, that, that data could become extremely valuable, not just for the medical marijuana, but as you're saying, all the drug-related.
I, I'm actually on the positive side of that debate. There is some debate, again, among the dispensary owners about, you know, how we should weigh in on that, but I believe that although it probably could be used against us in some way, you know, I think the overwhelming benefits for society is that we should share that data. Not by individual or names, but, but like, as you said, patient A versus patient B, I mean, you know, keeping the individual privacy there, but being able to use some of the data to come to medical conclusions, I think would be helpful.
Certainly would.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Speaker cards?
Mayor, we have 13 speaker cards. There were four that were turned in that did, indicated they did not wish to speak, of which one Fountain Hills residence is against the extended hours, one Fountain Hills residence is for the extended hours, two non-Fountain Hills residents were for the extended hours.
All right, thank you.
I didn't really understand the process.
So we have 14 cards.
All right.
First speaker is Shelley Maury, followed by Doug Hebert.
And, and everyone who comes up, just a reminder, just state your name, not your actual physical address, just the, the town or city where you reside.
Hi there, my name's Shelley Maury and I reside in Scottsdale, Arizona. I'm the founder and creator of Drug Free Arizona, the largest substance abuse prevention organization in the state and recently started Prevention Works Arizona for the past 13 years. I've dedicated my professional career to the prevention of underage drinking and drug use. I understand you're in a really tough position tonight. You're being asked to double the hours of this dispensary. And if I were in your shoes, these are just a few of the things that I would consider when, with regard to community and public well-being before casting my vote. First, the applicant has wrongly stated over and over again that dispensaries lead to lower drug usage. You have a study right there in front of you, the Arizona Criminal Justice Commission Arizona Youth Survey, that shows between 2008 and 2012, increase of marijuana use or marijuana use has increased amongst our youth 14% during that time period. In addition, states with medical marijuana laws have higher rates of youth marijuana use than those that do not. Secondly, the applicant claims that his business is suffering as a result of limitation of hours. According to the report that Mayor Kavanaugh has, it's the Arizona Medical Marijuana End of Year Report 2013 by the Arizona Department of Health Services, the business problem could quite frankly be increase in competition. In 2013, there were 973 dispensaries. That's a sevenfold increase from the year before. Also, the report states that five dispensaries do 40% of the marijuana sales in the state of Arizona. The state, the same report says that Fountain Hills ranks third lowest for marijuana cardholders. And whether it's 174 or 278, that just means there aren't a lot of customers in Fountain Hills doing a lot of transactions. And is this really about patients or is it about profits? The largest group in Arizona is 18 to 30-year-olds and they do the largest marijuana business, followed by 30 to 40-year-olds, followed by 50 to 60-year-olds. The data shows the older the population, the fewer transactions they have with regard to medical marijuana. And he's saying it's just, this is just about access. Under the current law, every patient is allowed two and a half ounces every two weeks. That can roll about 140 joints. So if you smoke 140 joints in two weeks, you have to smoke a joint about every two and a half hours. This is half of that. This is 70 joints. So that's half of what's allowed every two weeks by medical marijuana patients. So we're here to say that there's a lot of marijuana that could be, potentially be out there. One out of 10 Maricopa County kids gets their marijuana from somebody with a marijuana card. And so increased hours equals increased access equals increased availability equals increased usage. And so tonight, I would just please ask that I've provided some of the science behind the reason why not to double the hours of the dispensary and I just ask that you, that you not allow that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Doug Hebert, followed by Dwight Johnson.
Good evening. I'm Doug Hebert, resident of Fountain Hills. I'm retired after 32 years of law enforcement, over 26 of those years as a special agent for the U.S. Drug Enforcement Administration. I retired a few years ago as the Assistant Special Agent in Charge here in Arizona. I'm not here to debate what benefits marijuana may or may not have on the 1% of cardholders who have cancer or are terminally ill. I am here as a resident of Fountain Hills and as a former DEA agent who has first, who has seen firsthand how drugs and increased crime go hand in hand. Other Western states like California has medical marijuana enacted several years before Arizona did. And Colorado and Washington have legalized recreational marijuana use. The applicant talks about all his sophisticated security systems in place, the lighting, the bulletproof glass, the security, the security cameras, the security guards, the panic buttons, restricted access. All of these state-of-the-art security systems are basically useless to those who want to rob a dispensary. In California, robbers and gang members are using the Medical Marijuana Act to their advantage and the mayor actually touched on this. They're becoming cardholders, patients. They frequent a dispensary. They become a customer. They display their state-issued medical marijuana cards, gaining complete access to the facility, bypassing the locked doors, the bulletproof glass and the security guards. Then when the timing is right, they commit the robbery. January 2014 in Los Angeles, two men, Raymond Easter and Daniel Hinton, who robbed a medical marijuana dispensary, killed one employee and shot another, was sentenced to life in prison without parole. Both were medical marijuana cardholders. Hinton had been frequenting the facility for several months and was known by his nickname as Scooter, which was also his gang member name. Once Easter and, Easter and Hinton gained access to dispensary, they had the dispensary worker and the security guard lay on the floor face down and shot them execution style, took the marijuana and also cash, and they destroyed the security cameras that were in the facility. Only the security guard actually survived. On the very same evening, ala Pacman, a 39-year-old was working in a medical marijuana dispensary in Hollywood. The owner of the Hollywood holistic discovered Pacman's body when he walked into the business at 9:00 PM. Police said they believe the assailant or assailants entered the dispensary, stabbed Pacman and left with $3,000 worth of marijuana, as well as the store's closed circuit recording equipment. November 27th, Palmdale, California, a security guard was shot during an attempted robbery at a medical dispensary at Palmdale. The incident occurred at Green Cactus Collective around 7:00 PM. A medical marijuana dispensary in San Bernardino Mountains robbed Wednesday night, authorities said. Robbery was reported by the Sheriff's Department at 8:56 PM. Seattle, two robbers raided a medical marijuana dispensary in Seattle. Despite five video cameras, one panic button and a window separating the workers from the patients, two men still robbed the clinic on Monday night, making off with 10 pounds of marijuana. Tempe, Arizona, October 2013, authorities said three men entered the Arizona Co-Green Co-op near the intersection of Southern Avenue and Rural Road about 7:20 PM. According to the Tempe Police Department, police said the men struck an employee and then shot him before fleeing. Tempe firefighters treated the employee and he was taken to a hospital with life-threatening injuries.
Excuse me, three minutes are up. Could you just wrap it up?
Yep. The bottom line is that drugs and crime go hand in hand. And almost every article on the internet involving robberies or other acts of violence in marijuana dispensaries happened in the early evening hours. If you take into account the safety and welfare of this community, extending the hours in the Fountain Hills clinic is not in the best interest of Fountain Hills. The applicant prides himself on not having reported crimes. And as the mayor said, and I too believe that this is particularly due to the fact that his, due to his current operation hours that are in place. Extending the hours is an invitation to cardholders who are non-residents of Fountain Hills to make purchases at this dispensary so he can quote-unquote "compete" with Tempe and Mesa. I don't believe Fountain Hills needs that type of competition. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Dwight Johnson, followed by Robert Dittah.
I know, I know you're all kind of emotional, but let's just not clap. Okay, thanks, I appreciate it. And you are who?
I'm Dwight Johnson. Lived in Fountain Hills for 15 years now, have a wife and then a son who is now a junior in high school. He was two years old when we moved here and we've just had a wonderful quality of life in Fountain Hills. I'm very concerned though about adding hours. Again, due to added accessibility to our youth is, was indicated, one out of 10 of our youth in Maricopa, Maricopa County right now get their medicine or they get their marijuana from a, a medical cardholder. And that very concerns me. We also know that when our teens are out of school, that's when they have more challenges with decision-making. We're a very unique town, as you indicated. We do our best to protect our children. Some say we hover too much. That's kind of a Fountain Hills saying. But that's what I love about this town. We work so hard every day on prevention, preventing our children from making poor decisions. So much of what we try to do is identify the risks that are involved and then go our, do our best to minimize those risks. I'm very concerned about extending the hours also because it does get dark at 5:30 in December here. And when it's dark, it's very hard to monitor a block away or what's going on in that whole environment. And then my other question is, is why? As a businessman myself, going back, the applicant knew the rules, nine to five, Monday to Friday, almost a year ago. And that was reconfirmed last April. The rules were nine to five, Monday through Friday. That was before he really made his major investment in the facility. And he developed his business plan around these hours, I'm assuming, and chose to proceed. He knew the personality of our town and was aware of our strong efforts, strong efforts to prevent underage drinking and drug use in our town. He knew the passion that so many of us have to protect our children. I urge you to continue the hours that exist today to protect our children and for the safety of our community. Thank you.
Robert Dittah and Tom Lawrence.
I have a home here, actually a Dennis Brown home, that has lasted more than 10 years, which I believe is a record, as far as I know. And I have a, and I have a 13-year-old son that goes to school here at the Fountain Hills Middle School. I'm going to give you a little background because I want to tie into my business experience. I'm a former founding partner and CEO of a large dental company. We had 46 locations across the United States, Mexico and Canada. You know, we grew our business in three different ways. We grew it organically, we grew our business through acquisitions, and then the one I want to focus on, we grew our business by startups, relocating or locating businesses in different towns, towns like Fountain Hills. The most important thing that we did in this dental business before we set up a branch business was that we really looked at the potential customer, the dentist, and how many dentists were there, what was our base and how, what was their, what was their patient load? Okay, this is a dental business. Now, if you look at a, you know, if you look at the applicant's business, his customers are those folks that have the cards. So we're looking at a business that's asking for extended hours for less than one, one and a half percent of the population here in Fountain Hills. That's not a good, that's not a good customer base. That's not a base I'd set one of my businesses in. I mean, it just doesn't, it didn't quite gel with what I was thinking. So from a business perspective, I, you know, I feel bad because at the P&amp;Z, he admitted that he's not making money. I'm here to tell you, 24/7, you may not make money because you don't have the customer base. If you don't have a customer base, you're not going to, you're not going to draw a business. Maybe he'll draw business from other locations into Fountain Hills. Maybe that's good and maybe that's bad. One other thing, I was very curious about the dispensary and so I got a couple of friends together and we decided to go, we're retired, we have nothing better to do. So we decided to go park across the street from the dispensary on a Friday afternoon for over three and a half hours. And here's what we observed. Six people entered the dispensary. Five were males, six people in over three and a half hours. Five were male, one was female. All six came out with bags of product. The average time spent inside was 20 minutes. I'm not sure what they were doing, but you know, whatever. Average age was around 25 to 30-year-old. And that was only the average age because one male who arrived in a golf cart was probably 50 years old. Two of the males parked down the street. I don't know if they just didn't jogged up, walked up, came up. A couple of, the, the rest parked in the parking lot. So this wasn't, this wasn't what we expected. This is Fountain Hills. I figured, I figured you'd see people in the age range of 60 to 80. That's not what we saw. And so that's my observation. I forgot to say this at the P&amp;Z. I would prefer we leave the hours the way it is in this town. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Tom Lawrence, followed by Cindy McDonald.
Madam Mayor, council members, my name is Tom Lawrence and I am a resident of Fountain Hills. As a community member, a parent of a teenager, and as someone who has worked with youth for over 30 years, 27 of those years in this community, I am urging the council to leave the, the business hours as, as they are. My concerns, my concern centers around the increased accessibility of a controlled substance. By broadening the accessibility to the community, you may also be broadening the accessibility to our youth. There's significant amount of research today that indicates the adolescent brain does not fully develop until the early to mid twenties. And there's a similar amount of research that indicates the regular use of cannabis during adolescence increases the risk of developing cognitive impairment later in life. So the growing body of research demonstrates the vulnerability of the teenage brain to the neurotoxic effects of cannabis use. In addition, it's been my experience, and particularly over the last few years, that youth have developed a decreased perception of risk when it comes to marijuana. And whatever can be done to lessen accessibility will only benefit our community. I believe providing a safe environment for our youth is our ultimate collective responsibility. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Cindy McDonald, followed by Maria Peralta.
My name is Cindy McDonald and I'm a resident of Gilbert. Although my grand, or my mother used to take my children here when they were little to see the fountain and now I'm taking my grandchildren here to see the fountain. It's such a beautiful place. I can't repeat everything that everybody just said, but in my mind, I had to wonder if this were a bank that was up here and he was asking to extend his hours to make it more convenient for his customers, I wonder if you'd just consider maybe it would be more convenient, even if he had six customers in the afternoon of Friday. And maybe, maybe if it was a bank, maybe you would consider letting him open on Saturday or in the evening. And by the way, I live in a very exclusive, beautiful community with a bank in our community in Gilbert. And our bank, which has plate glass window on it, has been robbed three times in the last two years in the middle of the day. Not when they close at 5:30, but the middle of the day. And they are inside of a Fry's grocery store. So I just wanted to maybe thought, have you all think about that. As I said, I'm a mom and a grandma. No, I'm not going to let my other two children smoke marijuana and I'm certainly not going to let my grandchildren, unless they get hit by a car going 45 miles an hour and then I'll probably consider it. I'm going to leave when I'm finished speaking because my son's home having a seizure and is, there's a respite caregiver there that I need to relieve. When he's had a seizure and he's vomiting in a bucket, it's, was very difficult when I had to drive all the way to Glendale, Arizona with him in the car, one time holding on to his shirt so his head wouldn't hit the window so that he could get some relief from the nausea. Painkillers, they're sold at Walgreens. I know it's different, but they have different hours for people and most painkillers are used for chronic pain, same as the medical marijuana, although mine is used, my son's is for nausea and seizure control. Have you ever had a loved one that had cancer? Have you ever had a loved one who you watched seize for up to 70 minute, five minutes at a time? It's not the box of chocolates I wanted to open in my life. I don't use medical marijuana, but I am a proponent of medical marijuana, not pot on the corner. I am actually now on a board of directors for a dispensary in Mesa and we're happy to serve customers from all over. But I don't feel that it's fair for patients that maybe have to have a caregiver. My son can't drive. I do work. It's hard to get where we need to go from nine to five. A lot of these patients have caregivers that drive them places. It's not about the people that you don't like, it's about the patients and the people who need it. It's about those people. Let's make it more and more about the people that aren't abusing it and need it and quit being so much about the few people that are abusing the medical marijuana or the painkillers or whatever. I would ask for your compassion for these people. Open your minds. I didn't want this for my life, but it is. And I'm a mom and a grandma and these people deserve to get their marijuana, their medical marijuana when they need it. And that might be a Saturday afternoon. It might not be noon on Wednesday. So just give them the chance. And I think in closing, I think everybody's missing the point. It's two words. It's ours equal dignity. Please, give these people the dignity that they deserve. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Maria Peralta, followed by Kathy Inman.
My name is Maria Peralta. I've been resident of Fountain Hills since March of 1992. And before settling here, we did look around Mesa, Scottsdale, and we landed on Fountain Hills. Why? Because of the values and the idea that it's a small, close-knit community, that we felt very comfortable raising our children here. I am the program manager for the Fountain Hills Coalition and I'm the parent of two teenagers, one of which will be a freshman in Fountain Hills in August. And for both reasons, I'm very concerned about the safety and well-being of our Fountain Hills youth. My heart goes out to Ms. McDonald, it truly does. And nobody in here questions what she would do for her child. would do for her child. And with all due respect to Ms. McDonald, you can see by Ms. Maury's demonstration the amount of marijuana that cardholders can get, and that's a two-week period. As Mayor Kavanaugh said, that I too came across the same information, that Fountain Hills currently has a hundred and seventy-eight cardholders in Fountain Hills. We currently have over eighteen hundred students enrolled in our Fountain Hills schools. The applicant is looking to extend the hours for what he claims is to accommodate and convenience for his clientele. Granting this extension and increasing the dispensary's hours into the evening and on the weekends will certainly create more opportunity for our youth to access marijuana. Just like any other substance out there, greater accessibility and availability puts our kids at a higher risk for use and subsequent addiction. When voting, I ask you please to have the foresight to see the risks that this request involves as it relates to our kids and the negative impact it will have on our community as a whole. Please put the safety and well-being of our eighteen hundred students, their parents, and the town of which we live ahead of the applicant's wish to accommodate the cardholders and the applicant's profit, whether it be profit, for-profit, or nonprofit. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Inman, followed by Melvin McDonald.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor, councilpeople, thank you so much for your service to our community. Thank you for keeping Fountain Hills beautiful. I am a Gilbert resident, and I've been an Arizona resident since nineteen ninety-two. I am coming to you as a new employee of the AZ Medicines, I'm sorry, Nature's AZ Medicines, Medical Marijuana Dispensary. I just started my job there this week. I took the job because I've been in marijuana reform for five or six years. I started into that because I took a look at what was happening in our high schools. My daughter went to two very good public high schools, and I put her in public because of all the drugs that were in the Catholic schools. When we got to the public school, I saw what was happening with the kids there. They're all taking pharmaceutical drugs, they're overdosing, we're losing ten children a month in Arizona alone. Kids are also binge drinking, of course, we all know that, and that's our largest problem according to the Arizona Youth Survey. As a woman with a respect for life, I had to look at this and realize that we could save lives with the truth. So, I became involved in marijuana reform. Over the past three years, since Proposition 203 has passed, what has happened is systematically folks have come to me over and over again and told me how they are getting off of these pharmaceutical toxins that our trusted doctors are prescribing to folks over and over again. They're killing someone every twenty minutes in our country, and again, taking ten kids a month in Arizona alone. The folks that came to me that got off of these pharmaceuticals and are now using a natural, non-toxic substance called cannabis, that's what you guys know as marijuana, have reported that they are getting off of their couch, they're losing weight, they are feeling like themselves again, and most importantly, they're paying attention to their children, guys. We've got a real epidemic, according especially to the Center for Disease Control. They list pharmaceutical overdoses as an epidemic in our country. One in five children is prescribed an ADHD medicine in America. I don't believe that one in five children have something wrong with them. These prescription drugs that are being allowed at the Walgreens without any bulletproof anything, folks are allowed to go in there and just get their pharmaceuticals, are being prescribed daily all the time, this is allowed. These are hurting people. They're hurting kids, and they're setting them up for a lifetime of addiction. When parents can choose a natural, non-toxic substance that makes them focus on their children and on their family, makes them feel better, this is a beautiful thing. Again, as a woman with a respect for life, as an Arizonan with a love for liberty, I would like you to look at this and realize that our pharmacies are open sometimes twenty-four hours. They don't have security. They really should, when they're taking life every twenty minutes. Please, reexamine your priorities and take a look at the facts on marijuana. You can go to the American Medical Association's website. All you have to do is Google marijuana or cannabis, and it will tell you everything about this medicine that it's been one for thousands of years, that Queen Elizabeth used it for her menstrual cramps. That's real. Please, do your research. I sat down with your husband, he's a good man, we had a nice conversation. I sat down with Sheriff Joe. He had me to his office for three hours. Why? Because we've got good information. This is new, unbelievable information that we're having now that we're breaking free and we're able to talk to each other as citizens via social networking. Folks, I understand that you're trying to protect us. I do get that, and I'm trying to protect kids, too. I want to keep them clean until they're eighteen. Make an adult decision when they become eighteen, when they're older. But let's get them off the toxins, for one thing, and let's allow a natural medicine. When pharmacies are open twenty-four hours, bars, I'm sorry to include that, but bars are open till two in the morning, and these are definitely killing folks. With a respect for life, please reexamine, or, I'm sorry, I have some water. Please reexamine our priorities in Fountain Hills and in Arizona, and allow these folks, us folks now, since it's my new job, to stay open a little longer, so the good people that come in to this dispensary, who I have witnessed, are elderly folks. I haven't witnessed anyone young. They've pretty much been older than me all along. They're coming in and sometimes in pain. I'm sorry, I will wrap it up, but please do reexamine the facts on this issue. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Melvin McDonald, and the last speaker is Don Goodland.
Thank you. Madam Mayor and members of the council, I wanted to address the issue of security, if I could. The earlier speaker spoke about all of these horrible crimes that were taking place. It is like comparing the United States to Afghanistan. California is off the charts for the reckless manner in which they created their dispensary program. Every instance that he was describing, as I heard, was California. In Arizona, the one description that he gave was of a co-op. Co-ops are illegal. You read in the paper every day where the co-op people are being arrested. Let me just tell you about the dispensaries and the training programs that I've been involved in. The gentleman got up and spoke that he had been with DEA. Donald Tucker was the head of the United States Secret Service for Arizona. He was later appointed by Bush the Senior to be the United States Marshal. He was later selected by the President of the United States to head all federal courts for the United States. When you had the Oklahoma City bombing, that was Donald Tucker. He came up through the Alkaball Tobacco and Firearms. Why am I telling you this? Because on the Board of Directors of a dispensary in East Mesa, I have gone through different dispensaries throughout the state, training employees on this. Did you know that if you were to go to the dispensaries throughout here, if you're pulling up to the parking lot, you are captured on the video? You have to both use your card to get in and then to get into the dispensary? That information is registered with DEA. Is it possible somebody could bring a gun? Of course they could. But you talk about a cold case, you have the person with the card, his photograph and two forms of ID, going through two walls of security with bulletproof items. You have panic buttons there that will notify law enforcement if there's any problem within that dispensary. I say that because the dispensary system in this state is as safe as any that I've seen. I've had the opportunity of meeting with many of the dispensary owners. I will tell you that these are not flower children. When Lori Roberts came and met with me on my son Bennett's story, she had made the statement, you know, I was against it, but I have now changed. I've seen it, and I'll tell you why I see it. Because you see elderly people with cancer, or people with epilepsy, or people in stark pain going in, seeking the medical relief that marijuana gives. I wish I knew the answer, and as I said before, I am adamantly opposed to legalization, but I believe when the findings that we've got and the discoveries that are being made in the field, why would you keep medicine away? It's about ours here in Fountain Hills. I don't know the geography or the people that hold cards or whatever. I'm just saying that it's wrong, and the last time we were at the P&amp;Z, there was a lady that came up that couldn't get it, her husband, I think, because of the hours. It is something that I, it's not about money, it's not about what the profits of anybody is making, it's about patient care and affording them the opportunity to do it. I can assure you that Arizona has the model of safety for medical marijuana in the United States. I've sat down with people in the Mesa Police Department, going through dispensaries, having them make recommendations to provide the security. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Mayor, we've had an additional card. So, our next speaker is Don Goodland, followed by Linda Bordeaux.
Hi, I'm Don Goodland. Before coming here, I had the news on, and actually tonight, a toddler was just hit dead and killed by a driver that had marijuana in their front seat. So, you'll be able to Google that when you guys get home. It's interesting, if the average age of somebody is sixty, and they're going to be out in a parking lot at night when it's dark, you know, who's going to be escorting them to the car to make sure they get there safely? I've been living in Fountain Hills since nineteen eighty-five, I moved here. I chose to live here. Before, there isn't even a high school. There was dirt roads. I love Fountain Hills. Mr. Steinmetz, I know him. He told me about this idea two years ago. He was in broadcasting. He's only been doing this for two years. He shared this idea at his daughter's gymnastics lessons, and I was shocked. I moved here for the values and the community feel and for the aspect of a small town. The people who have been speaking against this aren't even residents. He lives in Scottsdale. You know, if he wanted to do this, open this up in his neighborhood, not mine. I moved here to be sheltered from the many challenges other communities face. Medical marijuana dispensaries are relatively new, and we should be extremely cautious. You know, what's going to happen after hours when we have it late, you know? And especially with the amount of individuals that are using it, a hundred and seventy-five, it's not worth taking the chances. Once you open this up, you can't go back and change the hours. I think we need to see this in existence for several years and really understand this. I'm not saying that, you know, there's not a need for it. He doesn't have a medical background. He's a businessman here to make a profit, and that's what he shared with me, but not in my community.
Thank you. Mayor, the last speaker is Linda Bordeaux.
Hi, Mayor and Council. I didn't even know this was the topic tonight. I came to honor Julie, which I'll say again, thank you for everything you've done with me, for me, and for the town. But when I saw this was on the agenda, I thought I'd listen for a while and see what's going on. Interestingly, I'm dressed this way tonight. I don't know, it's just my luck, right? I do not have a medical marijuana card, let me state for the record. But I did just go through a very horrific death of my uncle in New Jersey, who had stage four lung cancer. So, in New Jersey, he was able to get medical marijuana. The bag of marijuana joints that the gal brought up to show you, my uncle was allowed the same amount. However, most of the people who are using this medicinally, they're not smoking joints. They're using it, they're compounding it, they're making paste oils out of it, decoctions, which is a tea, tinctures, which is an herbal remedy that is steeped in an alcohol base, so they can squeeze some of the liquid in their mouth to ingest it. And obviously, with lung cancer, my uncle was not smoking it, he was using it in other ways. I went to, as most of you know me well, I do a lot of research, I went to a website called www.thctotalhealthcare.com, and on that website, it's a compilation, it's a warehouse of all great minds around the world, of the best hospitals, the best doctors, who talk about the chemical compounds and how it addresses the body. It's one of the only elements that breaks through the blood-brain barrier for folks with brain cancer and eats the tumors and leaving the normal cells alone. Chemo doesn't do that. In my uncle's case, it extended his life for a bit, but he was pretty bad off, so unfortunately, I lost him this year. God, I didn't write anything down, I'm off the cuff here, but I would like to repeat the website because you might be interested to know what is going on. It's www.thctotalhealthcare.com. Give it a look, and you can see what some of the benefits are. Yeah, there's kids who are younger that are getting involved in medical marijuana, maybe they just want to get high. That's probably true. But there are also strains that are developed and made specifically for certain things like weight loss, that take the THC out of the medical marijuana. You can't get high. There's a brand called Charlotte's Web, it was originally called Hippies Disappointment because no matter how much you smoked, it wasn't going to affect you. And they renamed it Charlotte's Web, and it stops grand mal seizures like that. There's a TED Talk about it. This young girl had had grand mal seizures every fifteen minutes for an entire life. She was six years old, and she was about to die. And these gentlemen in Colorado created a strain that stopped her grand mal seizures, and it's been, I believe, two years now, and she hasn't had one grand mal seizure, and it's impossible to get any sort of euphoric side effect from this. The strains that they're making now, it's very scientific, and it's designed and targeted for specific things in the body, like fibromyalgia, Alzheimer's, chronic pain, and the like. So, I just wanted to put that out there. As I said, I have nothing at stake whether they extend their hours or not, but I think if people really do need this medication, if they want to stay open till seven o'clock, that's okay. Bars are open till one AM. People get hammered all the time, and they drive around and cause all kinds of problems. That's not what happens with this particular product, if you want to call it that cannabis. So, thank you for your time, thank you for listening, and I guess I wore the red shirt. I don't know what to say. Only me, right? Have a good night.
That's it? All right. At this time, I will close the public hearing. Consideration of ordinance fourteen dash oh-two, as just discussed. Further council discussion? Any further council discussion?
Let's go.
If not, I will entertain a motion either way. Councilman Brown.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Before I make my motion, I'd like to give a little background as how I feel. I feel like it is, if you want to buy marijuana, I would bet that a couple of phone calls, you could have marijuana any day of the week, any hour of the day, and even though you may not know just exactly who to call, you can find somebody that does know who to call. And so, I say that this is not what we're really up against. I think it's the parental guidance. I think it's, I too attended the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I tip my hat to past Councilman Archambeau, because he said it very eloquently about how it's up to the parent to parent that child through the years of adolescence that they're apt to be smoking marijuana or doing any type of drugs. It's up to the parent to make sure that doesn't happen. And we're talking about a business request of extending some hours. We sold the man a business license. He has a legitimate business right here in Fountain Hills. We were forced fed to put into Fountain Hills, and during the forced feeding by the state, we heard the very similar outcry of, "Don't do it, don't do it, don't do it." And since it's been open, I haven't heard one negative thing about it, nor have I heard of any incidences that have happened. And so, let's not talk about profit, and let's not talk about the possibilities. I mean, anything can happen. Somebody could have a drink tonight, have one glass of wine, would test positive, and run over a child. I mean, that can happen. That's life. That's where we're living. But I see it more of a parental guidance than I do a problem of somebody needing medical marijuana and not being able to get it. I don't agree with the hours that the planning and zoning put out, and I've got reasons for it. I would like to propose, and I'm going to change the hours, I move that the town approve the proposed zoning ordinance text amendment to section twenty-four point oh-three B to extend the hours of operations of Medical Marijuana Dispensary from eight AM to seven PM, Monday through Friday, eight AM to three PM on Saturday. I feel like that the argument is about having the availability six or seven days a week due to the hours that you're working. Very few people, very few people, and it's getting fewer and fewer work on Saturday at all, and very rarely do they work past noon. So, let's reach out and come to an agreement that seven o'clock on Saturday is not a necessity, but three PM would be a good hour for the business people that are working. That's my motion.
There's a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
I'll second for the purpose of the discussion.
All right, council discussion? Any council discussion? All in favor? All in favor of the motions? Can I have a, oh, go ahead.
Just the idea of the hours changing, and there's nothing that anybody said here that talked about our youth that, that anybody could disagree with. I think it's more for me a matter of using the idea of people who get it illegally, whether, you know, it's some guy buying a beer for someone who's underage, or if somebody does have a medical marijuana card and they're buying medical marijuana and then giving it away, that's illegal. A lot of the, many, everything pretty much that was brought up to us are illegal acts. So the dilemma is then to strip that away and not punish the people who legitimately, at, at this point in the state of Arizona, it's legal for them to use it. So I, I don't, while obviously nobody wants kids using it, and they don't want it to be recreational, and all of the things that we struggle with as parents and grandparents, we do get a level of helplessness for that, and we want to do whatever we can, but, but the end result is, it actually seems to be that the end result of having it regulated and available is actually helpful in the, in the stuff that we can't control. So, and I, you know, I'm, I'm fine with what you said, but I'm not sure about the, the reason of just, of just making the hours shorter like that, just from the same point of view of, this is a business, the market will do what it will do, and if so, if somebody really does need it, or they go to the doctor late on a Friday and they get a prescription, and then they can't get it, and they're ill, or their child is ill, or that kind of thing, I don't know how limiting the access to people who legitimately deserve it helps all of the problems that we were talking about. So I, I would rather have, see it as it was passed by Planning and Zoning, and just make an amendment to say, to keep the eight, eight to seven on Saturday.
So you're amending it to be Monday to Friday, eight to seven, and Saturday?
Basically, as, as written here, eight to seven, Monday through Saturday, as, as recommended by Planning and Zoning.
Monday to Saturday. Is there a second on the amendment? Amendment dies for lack of a second. I have an amendment and a second on the floors. Are there any further council discussion? Vice Mayor Jansen?
I just wanted to reiterate what Councilman Brown said, and the idea that we, it's important to focus on people that actually have the need. I've been contacted by six people since they knew this was coming up on the agenda, and they gave their personal stories of what is used for, many of what Linda had brought up. And so it just, it kind of emphasized the idea that, that was also brought up in Planning and Zoning, that, you know, even if it's only six or eight people that have the need, they have the need. And so I would support the original motion.
Any other, oh, did you want to discuss?
Yes, that's why, that's why I raised my hand.
All right, go ahead.
Obviously, it's a, it's a very hot issue, and we're certainly up here not debating or discussing whether it should be legalized or not, that was already decided by the state as a whole, and obviously, there's some very strong feelings on both sides with respect to that. 179 residents that have the prescription or have the script to have medicinal marijuana, they obviously, they have some level of need. I'm sure we could all sit down and debate that. We've all heard the stories. Somebody has it for migraines, somebody has it for some type of pain that they claim is chronic, that really can't be determined by any type of test, and it's just the person saying that they have this chronic pain, and certainly like with everything else, whether it be Vicodin, Percocet, alcohol, any other type of drugs, there's going to be abusers no matter what. We have people that are abusing food as well. So the question here becomes is weighing the needs of the residents against the risks, and the risks here. From, from what I've heard, and it's interesting that it's, I don't think you can get two groups that are further apart that spoke here tonight, and what we didn't hear are, what the vice mayor just referred to, are people that are actually using it themselves. We've heard from Mr. McDonald about family, we heard another lady that was here, I think she's since left, that uses it for her son that has seizures. But I think we won't hear from people because, that are actually using it because of the stigma attached to it. And I think that's probably why you have people parking down the street as Mr. did it saw, and not wanting to park in the parking lot, because it is a small town, and if you're at Cummings Termite Pest Control right across the street, you could look out your window and say, "Hey, that's so-and-so, oh, they're used," and this is a small town, and things get around very, very quickly in this town. So I haven't heard anything here tonight that would give me pause that increasing the hours, as proposed by Councilmember Brown, would create this danger, this risk. Marijuana is going to be in this town no matter what, heroin's in this town. Prescription medications, as a lawyer here in town, I, I deal with clients a lot that, whether it be a DUI or possession of medications, that, that are their grandmothers or their parents, those problems are here. And as Mr. Brown said, we did give this gentleman a business license, although probably begrudgingly, as I don't think there were, there were a lot of communities that didn't want dispensaries in their town, and Fountain Hills didn't have a choice, and we had to provide the zoning for this. It's here, it's being well-regulated from all accounts that I can hear, that I've heard, and I wouldn't have any problem with the extension of hours. I don't think we're going to see an increase or an uptick in our youth using marijuana. As a result, I think our youth that want to use it are going to use it anyway, no matter what, and they're going to find it in some way or another, they're going to use alcohol in some way or another as well, and they're going to take their parents' prescription medications as well. And whether it be nine to five, or eight to seven, or eight to three even now, I don't think it's going to pose a significant or even any real danger to the community. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mayor, if I may, thank you. Once again, this is an extremely emotional issue. I think as Councilman Elke eloquently vocalized or verbalized, yeah, we have people on, on both sides of the issue. It's extremely controversial. We, we, we cross these roads occasionally, and we need to weigh all the data, we need to weigh all the facts. We need to look at our society, we need to look at accountability, we need to look at responsibility. I have two daughters, most important thing probably in my life, including my wife, better get that in there. And, you know, one's in high school, and it's a concern, and I have one that's in college. And, you know, prior to the medical marijuana dispensary being in town, I mean, marijuana is, was readily available out there. I don't see a correlation here between the dispensary in town and an increase. That's just based on my observations, living in this town for 22 years. I would, however, Mayor, like to ask Captain Rodriguez just a couple questions in, in this regard, because it's important for me to, to ask these questions prior to, to making a decision. And by the way, regardless where we land with this, and I think I can speak for everyone up here, we didn't want to be here, we are here, now we're using common sense. I hope we're using common sense in making a decision. Captain Rodriguez, if you wouldn't mind, once again, I think Mr. Rogers indicated that there have been no incidents regarding this dispensary. Could you address that? Yes, no, maybe, kind of? I mean, where are we at with that? Have you had a lot of calls for service to go down there and, and deal, deal with issues at the dispensary?
Yes, Mayor Kavanaugh, Councilmember Legay, we have not had any notable incidents at, from that dispensary.
And I have one last question, and I'll ask you this, and if, if you're unable to answer it, that's fine, because there's a couple lawyers here that possibly could. I don't want to put you on the spot. I've read in the paper, and I've heard this evening, that we have cardholders that are possibly selling drugs to the kids. They're, they're getting these bags of marijuana, and there was a lot of, by the way, is that real marijuana?
It's a Reganale.
Oh, very good, because law enforcement, you see, I was really concerned when you held that up there.
Roll match, okay.
Good, you'll, 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 you'll make it home safe tonight, yes. But my question on a more serious point is that, so if someone was to have a, a medical marijuana card and was to sell to youth in our community or anybody, are there legal consequences? And what are those legal consequences?
That I would actually have to defer to the lawyers. Basically, the way, the way we read the law is just what you're possessing with that card is the main thing we're concerned about at this point. If it does get into a possession for sale, then we're going to have, it takes a little bit of digging. Laws are very complicated still, even for law enforcement on those matters.
But there are laws in place that will deal with this. Thank you very much. Mayor, I'd like to defer to, Councilman Elke, you mentioned you deal with, you know, some substance abuse issues. Can you clarify that for me?
Can you clarify, clarify about, "I deal with substance abuse issues"?
Yeah, not your issues. Your, your, your client's issues, excuse me.
Not all, not all of my clients, thank you.
The one client you do that.
One client, one client with the initials H.L. Thank you. I do know, certainly possession of marijuana, depending on the amount that you, that you have, can be charged as a class VI felony or a class I misdemeanor. And if you're possessing for sale, as Captain Rodriguez, the penalties certainly go up significantly from there. And so there are ramifications for that, and especially for the teens, they get it from someone else, even if the other person gets it lawfully, and they now possess it, they're committing a felony.
Thank you. And Mayor, just just one more comment in that regard. Thank you, Councilman. So with respect to the possible sale in this town of medical marijuana to our high school students, whoever is reporting this to us, or whoever's making quotes in the newspaper, let's arrest that individual, let's prosecute that person, let's do within the law what needs to be done, the same that would be done for selling alcohol, for selling prescription drugs. Let's deal with it that way, and make an example of, gentleman with the DE experience had mentioned these things are happening, let's make an example of, of these, of these particular individuals. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Yates?
Thank you, Mayor. Captain, one more, if you may. Although I don't anticipate there'd be, for lack of a better word, drug activity at the, the dispensary, have you seen an uptick in the town in general since the dispensary opened?
No, we've not.
Okay, so virtually no change in any type of marijuana calls or issues of that nature?
That, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, if I may, my, my initial reaction of this, taking consideration the, the moral and, and political and all that is, you kind of knew what the rules were, you, you have a small base, and, and you jumped in anyway, and I appreciate that. At 179 customers, and basically they can get it every two weeks, that's 26 times a year, so you roughly have an opportunity to get 46, 54 sales per year, not knowing what the value is of, of that sale, but if it's $100 every two weeks, so it's roughly a half million dollars. If, if it's more than that, you know, that should be a somewhat viable business. What I'm hearing, back to the common sense and weighing the data, is it's too new, new a business, there is no data, we don't know. So it's a little nerve-wracking to start making some of these decisions based on no data. And respectfully, and, and I'm, you know, I'm all for business, but you've been open seven months, eight months, we, we don't have enough data to really make a, an educated guess here. I am very cognizant, I, I've had, my father-in-law's wife pass away, she used the product, and it did help her towards the end. I've had, my wife's mother, who fought breast cancer, she did not choose to go that way, but she fought it. I'm, I'm very cognizant that there's enough data on there to say that it, that it may work. But what I am hearing is, and now being a liquor license holder in the state of Arizona, I had three in, in Ohio, the use does go up in the evening, period, the end, if you're going to compare apples. So I would almost like to amend Councilman Brown's to Monday through Friday, the 8:00 a.m. to 5:00, but make the 8:00 to 5:00 on Saturday. We don't need it open past 5:00, and if you're telling me that your, your client base has a tough time getting it Monday through Friday, well then giving it Saturday, 8:00 to 5:00 should cure that. Respectfully, it's, it's just, I, I do hear what people are saying, you're, it would seem that the chance for abuse, or the chance for something bad to happen, would happen after the, the sun goes down. Not having any data, you know, what else do we have to go with? But I, I would go ahead and make that as a motion to amend Councilman Brown's, 8:00 to 5:00 Monday through Friday, and 8:00 to 5:00 on Saturday.
All right, there's an amendment, is there a second? Motion dies first, lack of a second.
No.
Okay. All right, my, obviously, I'm not in favor of extending the hours. My concern is strictly with safety. I believe that expanding the hours puts us more in jeopardy of crime. The applicant's only been open for eight months, and Arizona has only had a limited time to see what would happen with the dispensaries. We are seeing extensive crime in other states that have had it longer, and I think that the fact that the applicant, the applicant has actually been quite lucky. He's in a very isolated area, probably criminals maybe haven't found him yet. But he's in a cash business with a very valuable product that's worth a lot on the street. My concern is strictly with the safety of our community, and also with the limited amount of police force that we have right now. I would hate to have to divert some of our police force to be monitoring the dispensary only because of the history of crime in other areas. As to whether students, young people, get marijuana from cardholders, we know that they already do. The Arizona Justice Study Commission of 2012 clearly stated that 11.6% of all young students who use marijuana illegally, without a card, get it from cardholders. So we already know that 11.6% are getting it from cardholders. I understand that parents and grandparents who are, who are very active in their community, who are considered good parents, are going to be those that are going to have, be able to keep their kids off of the drugs and away from using illegal marijuana. However, what about all those kids out there that don't have supervision? And we certainly know that there is a large young teen population that is without supervision every single day, even on Saturdays. When they are in school, they are under supervision of their, of their teachers, but once they are out of school in the evenings, then they have no supervision. These are the ones that are going to find the, the more accessible marijuana to their advantage. I strongly believe that the hours right now that he has are the hours that have kept his dispensary safe. Daytime hours in Fountain Hills are certainly safe hours. In the area where he is located, there's very few businesses that are even open on a Saturday. So he's going to be an isolated business. The applicant has made many statements which are just not based in fact. I find it hard to believe someone who says this place will be secure when a lot of the information that he's given is information that I can prove is not correct. I have both studies that he's referred to, the 2013 Annual Medical Marijuana Report by the Arizona Department of Health Services. I also have the very large Arizona Criminal Justice Commission study in 2012, which comes out every two years, to back up everything that I have said. The applicant also knew the zoning regulations concerning Fountain Hills. There were only a few sites where he was able to open his business if he decided to open it here. The application that he, the applicant knew that his business was not on one of our main streets, that there was no street lighting, and it was in an area where most of the businesses are only open Monday to Friday daytime. open Monday to Friday daytime hours. The hours of operation were clearly explained to the applicant, weekdays and daytime only, and there was also tight security measures that the applicant would have to put into place. The applicant was aware that this is a small town with a fraction of the population of Phoenix, the location of his other dispensary. He's also not even been in business for a year since the Board of Adjustment denied his request for longer hours. The applicant states that we are discriminating against his business. We would treat any marijuana dispensary the same. He is not like any other business. That's why he's in a separate category. The applicant is asking us to change the zoning regulations concerning the hours because he says that many of his customers need him to stay open late and on Sundays. With only 179 cardholders in Fountain Hills, that can't be too many. The applicant stated at the P&amp;Z meeting that most of his Fountain Hills customers are in his 60s. That certainly defies the national statistics that says that cardholders in their 60s only make up 12%. The applicant said at the planning and zoning meeting that his customers can't buy enough product to last them until he opens on Monday. Yet the customers can get five ounces of marijuana every month, the equivalent of, as you saw, at least 200 cigarettes. The applicant admitted that the marijuana doesn't go bad and can be stored for a long time, and you can Google that and find out. There's a lot of information about that. The applicant would also like us to believe that there's no crime at marijuana dispensaries. All you need is to Google it, and pages and pages of crime come up in other states that have had the dispensaries open longer than Arizona. To think that this type of crime will not hit us here is naive. Perhaps the dispensary has just been lucky up to this point. It's true, what he said, 73% are just for pain, but yet he constantly talks about those people who are suffering from cancer, and of course, our heart goes out to those people. But they are a tiny percentage of his clientele. Only 2% nationwide are cancer, 1/9th are glaucoma, 1/2% are Crohn's disease, and 1/9th of a 10% are just for nausea. He also has misled us as far as the ages. I have the study, which clearly says that between 18 and 40, 61% are cardholders, and we already know that they're predominantly male, 72%. I think it's also been stated here that it's very easy to get a marijuana card. It is also easy to gain entrance to the facility, and I think that it will be just a short amount of time before his dispensary is discovered and that it will be the victim of a crime. This brings danger to Fountain Hills, to businesses around it. There have also been some studies that show that there is also other types of crime that grow up around areas with dispensaries, such as home burglaries and other incidences such as that because people are trying to get money to purchase the marijuana. You know, these are things that anybody can go online and Google. They're not something that's hidden. You can go to a marijuana site and they will tell you everything, kind of in a slanted way, the way they want to present it. But you can go to the Arizona studies, and you can sit and you can read through these, and they will tell you the truth. Therefore, I cannot support this. After hearing fact after fact that the applicant presented and knowing myself that those facts were incorrect, I can't trust the applicant that he will keep his business safe. I can't trust him that our students will not be able to get the marijuana, and I am not voting for this because I am voting for the safety of our residents of Fountain Hills. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor, if I may, I'd like to make a comment.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought everyone was finished with their comments. Go ahead.
I thought we were too, until you made your comments. I think it's very inappropriate to sit up here and throw accusations at this gentleman who's a businessman for a business-friendly mayor in the town of Fountain Hills without the opportunity for him to defend himself. I respect your opinion. I've come to my own conclusions. I've researched all this. National statistics are very different than our state statistics, are very different than our local statistics. We know that. We understand our demographics. I've lived here for 22 years. Without prolonging this hearing, I think it would only be fair for the gentleman to come up here and basically have a nice discussion with you back and forth, but I'm not gonna recommend that. What I would like to ask for is Councilman Brown to restate his motion, so there's some clarity on the motion, in that we had a few amendments and we've been kind of around the block with all of this. Thank you, Mayor.
If we are finished with council discussion, then we'll read the amendment and vote on it. Do you have another?
I have another point. Mayor, the last point that you made, I take a bit of an exception to when you say you cannot support this because you're voting for the safety of the town of Fountain Hills, which would then imply that anybody that may vote for this are voting against the safety of the town of Fountain Hills. And I think that that is, you know, is not a correct characterization of those that are sitting up here on this dais and who have a love for this community, who have lived here for much longer than I, I've been here eight years now, and who love this community. So I take exception to that comment.
Well, it was not meant to insult anyone. Everyone has the right to say why they want to vote. My vote is no, because I feel it's a safety issue. If you don't feel it's a safety issue, then that's the way you vote. I have a right to say why I am voting on it, not while everybody is voting one way or the other. I am voting against it because I really feel that there is a danger to the safety, and that's my right to state why I want, why I'm voting against it. Anyone else?
Yes, and since we're saying how long we've all lived here, I've lived here 30 years and raised three sons and have four generations of family here, so to imply that anybody up here would not be as concerned about the safety of our children and our people here. And even the idea when, I think maybe Cecele said values and politics and things like that, well, maybe some people think that good values, this isn't against you at all, but just when you said the word, values to me are to take care of people who are ill or in pain or have other things going on. And you have prescription fraud and things like that, that does that mean that you don't have legitimate reasons for those kind of drugs? Now, this is a legal substance here, and we're scrutinizing this unlike any business that we would do. You just opened a restaurant, we have bars, we're not like, hey, how many people come in? How many people come into your place that are only from Fountain Hills? And if they're not from Fountain Hills, that might not be great. I mean, if there's 180 cardholders in Fountain Hills, that doesn't mean that's the only number of people that go there. But even if it is, who are we to have to say, well, then you should only be open this way because, you know, you're gonna lose money if you're open longer than that? We have a lot of places that come and go here. It's a business, it's a market, but we're taking something that's legal and scrutinizing it, I think in a way that we have never done. So, and again, and just mostly wanted to say that because of what Tate just said, and I appreciate that you're saying you're not painting us all with that brush.
Of course not. That's why I said I. I certainly didn't say we or say anything. I let everybody have as much time as they wanted to explain their vote the way I usually do and let all of the public have more than enough time to explain on both sides. I was trying to be fair in that way. But this is my opinion, my vote, and I have a right to say very clearly why I feel this way, just as everyone else has done. And then, no more discussion? May I have a roll call vote? Oh, I'm sorry, you would like it repeated. Could you repeat your motion, please?
Certainly. I moved that the town council approved the proposed zoning ordinance, tax amendment to section 24.03. B, to extend the hours of operations of medical marijuana dispensary, 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on Saturdays, and not open on Sunday.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Can I have a roll call vote, please? Councilmember Yates?
Based on lack of data, I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to vote no.
Councilmember Leger?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Dickey?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Elke?
Aye.
And Mayor Kepner?
Nay.
Mayor's 5-2. All right, thank you. All right, we're up to... Where are we here? Consideration of Resolution 2014-03, adopting issuance and post-issuance compliance procedures relating to tax-exempt bonds, Build America Bonds, direct pay, recovery zone bonds, tax credit bonds, and tax credit bonds direct play. Okay, I'll give everybody a chance to leave if you don't want to stay for the next exciting part. Okay, thank you all for coming.
Mayor Kepner, I'm members of the council. This is an $8.2 million issue. Well, no, I'm not kidding. It has to do with the issuance of bonds and the regulations of what we're required to do to keep our tax-exempt status on those. I'd like to ask the deputy town manager, finance director, to give a brief report on that.
Mayor, is this going to be a last report?
This will be my last report.
I've got a lot of questions.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The resolution that you have before you, as Ken said, deals with bond issuance and compliance, and this is for bonds that we have outstanding and future bonds that we may sell. And basically, because there are tax benefits that may be critical to the investor's decision to purchase the bonds, this resolution, with this resolution, the town covenants to the bond purchasers that we will comply with all the conditions, restrictions, and requirements throughout the life of the bonds. And those restrictions and requirements, as you have before you, deal with how we're going to invest those, the proceeds of those bonds, that we will invest them in the way that we said we were going to invest them, and also how we'll use those, the proceeds of the bonds, and also for good record-keeping, to keep good records so that people, the citizens, can see where the money went and that it was properly accounted for. With that, Representative from Gus Rosenfeld, Kim McIntyre, is here to answer any questions, and I'd be happy to answer any questions as well.
Okay, we'll start off with any questions for Julie? Okay.
Why are you leaving us?
I've been asking her that all week, but she seems happy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Anything else? I think they want to talk you out of it. Reno says no.
Mayor, if I may, Julie, what was the name of the attorney from Gus Rosenfeld?
Kim McIntyre.
Kim, thank you for sitting here all evening, it feels like, all afternoon. I feel like I should be asking you a question because you've invested so much time in being here, but you're okay with that? All right, very good. Thanks, Mayor.
Does anyone have any questions for Kim, who's been sitting here? No? All right, thanks, Julie.
Thank you.
All right, is there any other discussion on this? No? Can I get a motion? Thank you.
Move to approve Resolution 2014-03, approving the issuance and post-issuance compliance procedures relating to tax-exempt bonds for the town of Fountain Hills, Arizona.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor 7-0.
All right. Discussion with possible direction to staff related to any item included in the League of Arizona Cities and Towns Weekly Legislative Bulletin. Ken? Go to you.
Mayor Kepner, I'm members of the council. Again, it's just a brief update on some of the highlights of some of the bills that of interest. House Bill 2692, which is the HERF support, I think it's, in my opinion, taking a backseat to the budget right now. It's still there, but I think it's going to be part of the budget discussions that's going on in the legislature at this point in time. I don't know if anyone has any other further information. I know that town attorney has had some discussions with the league this afternoon on some updates.
Mayor, members of the council, the HERF resolution, or item, was actually scheduled for appropriations this week, but then everything that was is no longer, as some budget items have moved in front of it. It's supposed to be heard next week in appropriations and is expected to continue forward, but that's all we know at this point.
Okay, all right.
Mayor, to continue, there, House Bill 2517, which is the ramifications in general for the council members, you know, have, actually be removed or personally financially liable for access of legal defense regarding any attempt to exceed the gun laws in Arizona, will be personally liable for that. That's still going, and it seems like it's going on a very fast track. Another gun law, which is 2339, basically talks about concealed weapons, and that's the metal detector and the security at any special event, any public building, is the same. It's running on a very fast track as well.
Okay.
Obviously, you know that we opposed those from the last council meeting. We'll continue to do that as it goes through the process.
And the latest I have on that is that both are ready for the Cal in the Senate, but they're not scheduled as of right now.
They're waiting in Senate rules at the moment.
That's all I have. Anything else, Mayor?
About that 2517, which, it's not really just about guns because it's basically something that has ramifications to anything. When we're on a body like this and you make any kind of, like what we just did, or, you know, any decisions that we make, there's kind of an understanding that we're not liable personally, that we are able to be defended by the town, and that we, and part of that defense would be to say, well, our town manager said that this was an okay thing to do. And this is basically setting a precedent to take all that away. So yes, this particular one is about if a council decides that they don't want to have, like, guns, in this case, in a private, I mean, in a public building, and the state says they have to, then the act of everybody voting to do that would be something that we would be liable for, that we'd have to defend ourselves, we could be removed from office, which is really quite amazing because there are so many things that council members and other people can do who are elected where they cannot be removed from office because the people voted them in. So the league was really trying to emphasize that this wasn't about guns, it was about the basic way it works when you're an elected official. I had to think about, I was thinking about the money that we, when we, for a little while, refused to pay the Department of Water Resources, and is that something we should be removed for? Because basically, so, well, you have to. Well, we just voted not to. So it has more ramifications than that, and like I think Andrew just said, it hasn't gone through rules yet. I know we have this quirky thing all the time where you cannot weigh in on the computer unless it's going to go to a committee. So we're kind of playing cat and mouse here to see, because it has to be on an agenda in order to weigh in. My guess is with all these bills, since they're just getting rammed through, is we'll either end up having to write the entire Senate, which, since we already did take positions on most of these bills, that we could do that when it goes to the floor, or my real feeling is we'll end up asking the governor to not sign them.
Right, right, yeah.
I think they're gonna get there.
Yeah, and just to clarify a little bit, what, if we went to Andrew and we said, Andrew, what about this particular law? Like, for instance, that you have to have lockers outside, and Andrew said, that's the state law, it was passed, you have to have the, you have to have the lockers, and then we voted, or, you know, maybe some of us voted that we didn't want it, and we didn't, you know, we wanted to say, we don't care if it's the state law, we decided we don't want to do it, then, only then, would the person personally be liable? And I understand that the league is saying that this could, you know, lead to other things, but just for a little history, I was just interested in the history of this, like, where did this come from? Why would anybody think of doing this? Because we've never been held personally liable? And the information that I got was that some of the previous laws that were passed, while we were very law-abiding and we put the lockers out the way we were supposed to, there have been other cities that have just said, we're just not gonna do it. And the only alternative that the state then would have is to sue them, and the state felt that if they have to sue them, then they're using taxpayer money to sue, and then the town has to defend, and they have to use taxpayer money to defend. So they just felt that they could end up in kind of a stalemate like that, and, you know, I guess they just decided that if you actually want to vote to break the law, then we're gonna hold you personally responsible. But that's where that came from.
Mayor, just one point of clarification on that. This is actually, if you, on advice of council, that it's okay for you to act, act in that manner, and the state determines later on that you did not act appropriately, you can be held responsible. be held responsible. Unlike in a conflict of interest law, you know, all of you've been through the scary speech training, and you know that in the conflict of interest law, if you get a legal opinion that you don't have a conflict and that legal opinion's incorrect, you cannot be prosecuted under it. This is not the same. It says that if you get a legal opinion and it's incorrect, you can be prosecuted. So, it's a little different than if you get legal advice that it's illegal and you choose to act. This is if you're advised it's legal and you act, and it later turns out to not be true. So, it's...
I was just assuming that you were always going to give us the right advice.
We endeavor to be as right as we can.
Being positive about that. So, anyway, and the league, as Councilwoman Dickey said, is opposed to this because they believe that that's going to open the door to more personal liability, and of course, they're opposed to that. Anyone else want to? Councilman Elke?
Thank you. I have some concerns about that because it creates a bit of overreach because then, going back to the water issue, I mean, we all knew, sitting here, that it wasn't right because we didn't have a water company here, and we just got saddled with the bill from the state for $36,000, or, I should ask Julie what that amount was, for $36,000 or something like that. And, you know, we took a stand and ultimately, we paid it, but, you know, I think that stifles debate and discussion, and I think it stifles and probably scares maybe some not to, you know, not to vote what's right, because I still truly believe that was right. That was basically money that came out of our coffers, out of our local residents' pockets for our budget and went to the state, and we didn't receive any benefit in return, in my opinion. So, I think that's very chilling to have something like that that could potentially, you know, intimidate lower-level elected officials. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, I'd also like to weigh in on this. I appreciate your interpretation of the bill, and it may very well be intended that way. What concerns me is that the language is so broad. This type of legislation is absolutely insane. It's basically saying local legislators can't legislate. How insane is that? Is that even constitutional? No one has to answer that question. It's a question that's asked every day in the state of Arizona, but it's just absolutely insane. And to me, the intention is clearly intimidation. I mean, I was having a conversation with someone the other day that was thinking of running for council, and they read that, and they basically said, I'm not interested in running for council. When our legislatures are making laws like this, it's insane. And that word, I'm quoting from a citizen that was thinking of running for council because we have an upcoming election and didn't, the language is, and like I said, I respect where you're saying the tenet's coming from, but as with many of these bills, this language is absolutely too general, so I hope we track this, and I, for one, would vote that we move our opinion beyond the legislators because simply, they're not listening to our appeals, and we start moving our letters to the governor's office. Thank you, Mayor.
Andrew, this bill applies only to firearms, or does it go beyond that?
Mayor, members of the council, this bill is specifically related to firearms legislation, so that's not really what the league is saying. Their concern is that this is stepping into a territory that hasn't been stepped in before, and that the camel's nose under the tennis was the bigger concern. This is more specifically directed at the city of Tucson, and legislation had attempted to run a couple of different times that didn't gain any ground in the legislature, so they've taken an administrative position that affects that, and this is aimed at Tucson's administrative position.
Okay, thanks. Anything else? Okay, then we'll see. Ken, you have anything else on that?
I'll just say goodbye to Julie.
Oh, well, we're not finished yet.
Oh, darn.
We still have to, we still have to, do you have nothing else on the legislature?
No, I don't.
Okay. We're going on to then to, if you have nothing else for number eight, discussion from something from the town manager. Then we'll go on to number 10, which is summary of council requests, reports of recent activities. I always have lots to say, so I will let someone else go first. Go ahead.
I will go. My request is that Julie and Reno have a wonderful life and just be very, very happy, and thanks for the memories. I'll never forget what a relief it was when you came on board in the summer of, when was that, 1990? So, live well.
Okay, Councilwoman Dickey?
Sorry, that's a better way to end, but I do, I need to mention Raymond and from the town and myself, we met with Chris Coyle, well, we met with some folks from Republic, but Chris Coyle, Robert Bennett, Anthony Deech, Terry Ganant, Eric Walker, Heather Ruiz, and PJ Panoni. We had five days or so to get the application into the MAG Desert Peaks Award Public-P private partnership. We got it in on Wednesday, and so, there's eight judges, they'll be meeting sometime in April, and the actual presentation is in June, at the end of June, so presumably, we'll know by then. But I really wanted to thank them because it was a real rushed job, quick turnaround.
Great, good job. All right, then I'll go on to my section, which is activities and announcements, just letting everybody know what I've been doing as your mayor to represent you. I attended the East Valley Mayor's, does it got any? Excuse me, we're not done yet. I attended the East Valley Mayor's Prayer Breakfast hosted this year in Scottsdale. Over 400 people were in attendance to hear prayers from representatives of many faiths. It was a very inspiring morning. I welcomed the mountain to fountain runners on a beautiful Sunday morning in Fountain Park. I told them about our upcoming events and invited them back to visit us. This is the second time I've done this. The local businesses at the plaza did very well that morning, and many of them also were volunteers for the event like they were last year. We've had some great events this past couple of weekends, starting with Wisconsin Fest. I want to thank the L. Allen Crookshank River of Time Museum for putting on this event. It was a great success. They estimated 1,200 people, and putting the game on the TV for the attendance was just icing on the cake. St. Patrick's Day in the Park was another outstanding event. I want to thank the Sons of Amets for organizing it and distributing those profits right here in town. Among their many donations is to help fund the high school graduation so that they can hold it right here in Fountain Park. The town also had a tourism table at St. Patrick's Day, and I want to thank Grace, our intern, and all the volunteers who joined me that day at the table. The weekend also brought us the Thunderbird Fine Art and Wine Affair. I want to thank Judy Combs and the organization for having this very popular event once again here in town and for allowing Fountain Hills residents free entrance. Thank you to all the resident volunteers for helping out at the event. It was well-attended with lots of interesting art and some very fine wines. Sunday night was a fun time at the Chabad Purim Celebration at the community center with a Mexican theme this year. Rabbi Mendy Lipsky and his wife Sippi put together a very nice event. The entertainment was a famous hypnotist who was quite amazing. There were some brave volunteers, not me, but one of them was our own resident, Susan Dorcas. Ken Buchanan and I were guests at the annual Rotary Luncheon where they honored members of the police and fire departments. Those honored were from MCSO, Fort McDowell, and Rio Verde. Congratulations from all of us to all the honorees, and thank you to the Rotary for doing this every year. I also attended Scottsdale Chamber of Commerce social event at Copperwind. In the middle of the speeches, everyone stopped what they were doing to look out over the town at our beautiful fountain. It is a spectacular view from up there. I also want to extend congratulations to all the new inductees into the River of Time Museum Hall of Fame, and to thank the museum for putting on a very nice event to honor them and holding that event right here in our community center. And I invite everybody to come out on Saturday in Fountain Park for our second annual Pico Kite Festival. Let's just hope that we have a good wind. And of course, I will add my thoughts about happiness to Julie. I am so happy that you were going on to a very, a very nice retirement, much well-deserved. I know Reno's waiting. That you've got lots of plans. We are going to miss you so much. I've known you for many, many years, way back when John was on the council, and also for Brian, who left home. He also I have known for 18 years, and I know that Hoppy the Bunny is going to be missing him very much. Anyone else have anything else they would like to add before I ask for an adjournment?
I've just got an idea here. If we can impose on Bob to take a picture, I'd love to get a picture with Julie, the council, the clerk, town manager, just up in front here. It's your last meeting, so I think it'd be wonderful to memorialize it that way if we could do that, and Bob, if you could send that to the town and we can have that sent out to everybody.
That's great. That's a wonderful idea.
With that, I'll move to adjourn.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, okay.